Okay, we are recording, Mr. Chairman.
I hereby declare the Township of Long Hill Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for February 1st, 2022 to order at 7:30 PM. Fall to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the Municipal Bulletin Board. And website by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Korea News Newspapers and by filing a copy with the Municipal Clerk. Standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding, any questions or comments must be limited to the issues. That are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off, announcement is made, that is a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment. Not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM in any regular or special meeting of the board unless the motion is passed. By the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Brian, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Now, we have the pleasure of swearing in our new appointees, the second alternate, Jessica Brennan, would you do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. New board member Brennan, if you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I Jessica Brennan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance to same.
To faith, true faith and allegiance to same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of zoning board of adjustment alternate to member.
Of zoning board of adjustment alternate to member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office.
And that I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment.
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage.
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public.
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, now I can take the roll call.
Now we can do a full roll call, yes.
There you go, Mr. Aronio has not joined us yet, he's currently absent.
Deborah?
Yep.
Jerry's on the phone with me, hold on, yes Jerry. Yeah, can Jerry come in the public side, you promote him, he said he didn't get the link. Okay, yeah, go ahead, go on the public side and she'll promote you. Alright, thanks. Bye. I knew that was him, that's why I took the call.
No problem. Alright, I'll wait a minute then till he comes in, hold on. Alright, I'm gonna continue taking the roll, when he comes in, I'll note the time. Mr. Gianakis is excused tonight, Mr. Grosskoff?
Present.
Mr. Hane?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused tonight, Mr. Lindemann?
Present.
Ms. Brennan?
Present.
Vice Chairman Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Correct?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, Jerry will be joining us shortly. Alright, so, we had the roll call, the next thing is, we had three of those resolutions, but the one 224230 Main Street is being moved. To another time to consider it, so we have two left, new singular wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T application number 21-21Z. Did everybody have a chance to look at that resolution? Okay, is there any questions, comments, changes? Okay, who's eligible on this one?
That's a good question, and unfortunately, I don't, I can't get into the resolution right now, so for those of you who were on, for, for, were for both AT&amp;T and. And T-Mobile, could you please raise your hand, so I can make notes, okay?
You were too, Brian, right?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't on either.
Yeah, that was on, it was on a Thursday in November, so we had Ed. We had Mr. Hane.
Right.
And Mr. Grosskoff.
Right.
I think that's it for.
Yeah, I think myself, Mr. Lindemann and Ms. Brennan are not eligible.
And Jerry wasn't there either, right?
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, okay, so it's the three of us.
That's correct, the three of you.
Do I hear a motion by? One of you? And the other one did second.
I move the new singular wireless PCS, PCS, AT&amp;T, application.
Okay.
Resolution.
Resolution, thank you.
Second?
Go ahead, okay.
Mr. Hane, okay, Mr. Grosskoff?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes, alright, that takes care of that one. Now, the next one is the T-Mobile Northeast LLC application number 21-22Z. I believe that was the same, same people, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Why is my name, oh yeah, there's my name, okay, that's me. Okay, so. Want to switch movers? First of all, does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes to them?
No.
No, okay, so why don't you move it, Scott?
Yes, I agree.
No, say I moved the motion.
I moved, I moved to move forward.
Motion to adopt the resolution is drafted?
Yes.
Thank you, good. Second.
Alright.
Okay, Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskoff?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Action carries, thank you.
Oh, it's quick, alright. Now, we have an application.
Mr. Chairman, before we, I just, I think Jerry's here, do I just want to?
I let him, he's coming on, yep. Uh, Mr., yes, just, I see, so I'm gonna note, Mr. Aronio was joining the meeting at 7:38.
Before we commence the hearing on the next application, that's the.
Yeah. I was just gonna read the introduction to it.
Perfect.
It's a major preliminary and final site plan. Block 10515, lot 7, zone B-D. Located at 44 Plainfield Road, application number 21-13Z. Jonathan Roker, applicant proposes to construct a three-story mixed-use building to include 1,900 square feet of retail on the first floor. And 24 residential units on the second and third floors. Now, Steve, I think you have something you want to compare.
Well, as always, predicate issue, I want to just reflect that I did have an opportunity to read the notice and review the affidavit of service and publication as did our board secretary Deb Coats. And I found the content of the notice to be sufficient. I found it to be timely served on January 20th published and January 20th. Of 2022 certified mail, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So unless I am convinced by anyone, otherwise, at least at the present time, it's my legal opinion that the board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. I know we'll be swearing in witnesses, but I know we have counsel for an applicant, and I think we got an indication that there. Is or may be counsel for an neighboring objector. But, Mr. Chairman, perhaps it's best to let applicant's counsel introduce. The application, and then I can speak for a bit with your permission. On the fact that this is a bifurcated application, we had some prior proceedings, and essentially what that. Means to refresh the board's recollection on bifurcated applications, but I'll hand it back to you for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the applicant's attorney is here, correct?
Mr. Correct, Mr. Chairman, good to see you again, board members, good to see you, I hope you're all healthy and safe. Yes, I am here representing John Rocker on property identified as. Block 10515, lot 7, commonly known as 44 Plainfield Avenue, and the property is roughly 1.87 acres in size. The site is situated in the Township's BD Downtown Valley Commercial District. A little bit of history, this application was submitted as Mr. Warner indicated on a bifurcated basis, by the way. I only put my jacket on because Mr. Warner put his jacket on.
They taught us in law school that you have to look the part, that's half the battle, the other half is to find the courthouse for the municipal building.
But Zoom changed everything. So, by resolution adopted on April 6, 2021, this board granted D1 use variance relief and relief. From the number of allowed stories from two to three, although we met the overall height. To permit the construction of a mixed-use project comprised of 24 rental apartments on the second and third floors. With a small amount of retail on the first floor. This board retained jurisdiction on the site plan application. Tonight, we're seeking and excited to bring the second part of the application to this board, namely. The application seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. The number of residential units remains the same, namely 24. We have a slightly reduced retail use from 2,400 square feet to 1,900 square feet and added some internal amenity space for the residential units. The number of parking spaces remains at 60, with 24 of those spaces being tandem spaces in the garage, with the remaining 36. Being surface parking spaces. Three of the residential units will comply with the requirements of the Uniform Housing Affordability Control Regulations, or otherwise known as UHAC. Mr. Warner has confirmed jurisdiction. It should be noted that no variances are being sought in connection with the site plan application. There are a few design waivers which our engineer will discuss during her testimony. I have four witnesses, the first being Catherine Muller from the applicant's site engineer. Next, we have a new architect, John Sorocco, the applicant's architect, Doug Poliniak, who testified about traffic. And will answer any questions the board may have regarding traffic, but. Most of the testimony regarding traffic, in fact, all of it was provided during the use variance application. And we will finish off with Jim Kyle, the applicant's planner. I also have Mr. Rocker and Mr. Kraewitz, who are principals of John Rocker and Associates. If there is a need for any operational testimony. So, without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present my first witness.
Before you do that, Steve, before you make your announcements or say what you're gonna say, just swear at our experts, so they're all sworn in.
Sure, I'll swear in our board professionals, Ms. Nello and Ms. Laney, our engineer and planner respectively, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you both, and actually, Mr. Chairman, before we just addressed generally the bifurcated application process as a refresher for everyone. I did want to just ask Mr. Lair a question or two, if I may.
Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Lair, because you mentioned the applicant being John Rocker, then you mentioned John Rocker and Associates, and I believe the owner of the property might be BN-K Homes. If LLC, if I'm not mistaken, so maybe you could just clarify the applicant, the applicant's relationship, notwithstanding that this is the second hearing in a bifurcated application.
BN-K Homes is, is the real estate, the LLC that owns the property, consent was properly granted. John Rocker individually is the applicant before the board this evening.
Okay, so it is Mr. Rocker individually, thank you for clarifying that for me, I might have been the only one who wasn't 100% sure. The, and actually, that's the only question I had, other than, Mr. Lair is free to tell me where, if I may be wrong, just generally, but I just wanted to remind the board. That this is the second. Application as part of a bifurcated application process. Under Section 76B of the Municipal Land Use Law. Which provides for same generally for the applicants an opportunity. To find out whether or not they get use variance approval and or other variance relief. Prior to going to the second phase, if you will, of the detailed preliminary and final site plan. Approval process, which is where we are now, because the use variance approval, as he said. And the bulk variance for the three stories versus two stories was approved back about a year or so ago, if I recall correctly, and I don't recall, I was looking at a resolution, I wasn't here a year or so ago. But the, generally with such an application, on what I refer to as the second phase, the site plan phase. The applicant is required, if I recall correctly, under the Laco case, to not only establish a site plan. Approval through the quote-unquote "normal" processes, if you will, but also is obligated under Section 76B, the bifurcation provision. To reprove the negative criteria. With the same quality of proof, as in this case, was required for the D1 use variance approval back in what I'll refer to as Phase 1. That is, that is the two prongs, and no substantial detriment to the public good, no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So with that same D1 use variance enhanced quality of proof, if you will. I suspect the applicant would agree and is intending to do so through their planner, would that be correct, Mr. Lair?
That's correct, the only thing I would add is that that same Section 76B just requires. That the vote be a majority, not a.
Right. Absolutely, thank you for that clarification. That is absolutely correct, in my opinion. Also, it's my understanding that all the board members can hear the application. This is a new application, albeit part of a bifurcated application process. But the first application was approved, resolution adopted, it was completed, so to speak. This is a new application, so all our board members are qualified to hear the application. All those that are here with us this evening. The, the. Let's see if there was anything else I needed to address, my apologies, at least at the outset. I don't think so, other than I guess we can hear not only from all members of the public. But also, if I understand correctly, there's an objector, neighboring public member represented by council, who we no doubt will hear from. That council should be entitled, when we get to that portion, to put their appearance on, his or her appearance on the record. And as the board knows, the procedures are such that when someone's represented by council. Questioning of witnesses is done by the attorney, in this case for the objector. But of course, the client of the objector is free to testify under oath, like all members of the public are, free to testify under oath when we get to the public comment period. So as usual, I probably said more than enough, Mr. Chairman, so thank you for the opportunity.
No, no, you, you're perfectly right on point, Steve, thank you for heading us in the right direction and giving us that base. Jerry, could we see your picture, even though I know what you look like, but it's nice to see you.
And he may also be on mute, so we want to make sure that.
Yeah, well, he can stay on mute, I just want to see him.
There we go.
Ah, thank you, Jerry.
His brother's one, okay.
I wouldn't know what I'm doing if I didn't see you.
You can hear me now as well.
Yes, thank you, good, I just wanted to make sure you're up and running before we continue.
Here we go. President accounted for.
Steve, would you like to swear in their first witness?
In fact, if I, I'll swear in all the witnesses that I could see.
That's fine.
So I see Ms. Muller, I see Mr. Kyle, I see Mr. Sorocco, and Doug Poliniak.
Doug Poliniak is there as well, if all four of you will please raise your right hand, do all four of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Thank you all, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lair, who was your first witness?
Yes, my first witness is Catherine Muller.
Just for the record, she was the same person who testified last time, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and your license is still current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you're an expert, we considered you an expert last time, we'll see you an expert this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, do you want to pull up the color rendered site plan to start this hearing? And I believe that Deb, you've provided the ability to share documents.
Sure.
And this document has been marked by the board, it was submitted previously. It's A3, it's actually ZB, the zoning board exhibit PB6. There you go. Alright, so why don't you start by talking about what, what the existing conditions are and what is proposed?
I'm sorry, before you do, Mr. Lair, did you say this was marked as A3 in a prior?
No, no, this, but on your website, it's marked PB3.
Right, PB3, okay, yeah, but for, not to confuse things, or perhaps too, but why don't we just mark them as A applicant, you know, and we'll start with one. Regardless of what it was previously.
That would be a good idea, so that.
Okay, so this is A1 for our record in these new proceedings, but.
Yeah, I can always change the website afterwards to reflect what happens this evening, so.
Alright, so with what's been identified as A1, can you tell the board what this is?
Sure, this is a, it's entitled rendered landscape plan dated 1/28/22. Marked as, we have it identified as PB3 for our exhibit. What we did here is we took our landscape plan and site plan and overlaid it on a Google Earth 2020 image. So that what this shows for the board, north is to the top of the screen, it's not identified by an arrow, but it's towards the top. There's residential uses towards the north. Plainfield Road, which is a Morris County Route 606 to the east. Still check that number. And across Plainfield Road, we have the entrance to the Valley Mall, other commercial uses, an existing restaurant. I believe it's at Goddard School, to the south, we have residential neighbors, Metzler Street further to the south. And more commercial uses to the west. This highlights where we've placed our building, it's gonna be a mixed use with retail on the first floor, residential on the second and third. Within the center of the lot. We have a rectangular lot, it's narrower by more deep, we do have wetlands in the rear. They have been flagged and submitted to the DEP for an LOI. And we've tried to respect the existing limits of disturbance on the site. We also respect the wetlands, we will be applying, if the board approves the application for what is called a redevelopment. Permit for some encroachment within the wetland buffer. As part of our design, you'll see some walls and the location of the rear corner of the parking. Respected the limits of the improvements on the site today. We do have the landscaping shown on here, I'll go into it further when I get to our landscaping plan. And it'll be more clear, what we've tried to do along the perimeter of the site. Is retain existing vegetation and supplement it with other vegetation along the northern and southern boundaries. So.
The same number of parking spaces are being provided, correct, as we testified during the use variance application?
That's correct, and I'll go into that further with the site plan.
Right.
So I'm gonna switch over to our site plans, which were submitted as part of the application. They're dated August 3, 2021. Right now on the screen, I have the cover sheet, which shows the existing conditions. Again, I've already identified the uses to the north and to the south as single-family residential. And commercial to the east with Plainfield Road and also to the west. The existing conditions have a small building in the front. Delinated caved parking behind it, and then a large gravel area, which has been used for landscape trucks and vehicular storage back there. That's the dash line that you see on the lot towards the rear. There's a high point where the building is, so we have some drainage area that goes to the south. Some that goes to the north, and some that goes to Plainfield Avenue, under existing conditions. I'll switch over to the site plan. And go further into.
If you could just reference the sheet number, that was the cover sheet?
That was sheet 1. S1. So I switched to S2. The site dimension plan, again, the whole set is dated August 3, 2021, with no revisions. So as I stated before, we do have one primary building located in the center of the lot. We have one access point onto in and out off of Plainfield Road. The location was set so that our center line aligns with the center line of the Valley Mall driveway, so that we can have. Adequate turning movements and no conflict with our new driveway. We have parking along the entrance road, along the southern boundary, parking along the western boundary. The exterior spots, we have. 36 on grade. And we have 24 tandem spots underneath the building. The proposed building complies with all of the required setbacks in the DB zone. Front yard required at 20, our building is proposed at 21. The rear yard required is 25, we exceed that at 262 feet. The side yard setbacks are determined by the residential uses on the adjacent properties. Minimum required is 30 feet. And our minimum setback on the side yard is 36.1 in the northeast corner, where my cursor is. The building coverage allowed in the zone is 30%. Our building with the overhangs is 18.3%. The overall lot coverage allowed is 60%. All of our improvements totals 38.1%. So we do comply with the bulk zoning within the BD zone. The layout was, again, primarily set by the location of the driveway, we've talked to the county. We've incorporated some of their comments from the original site plan, which was submitted. We will be curbing the frontage of the property as required. We have provided the handicap spots required for 60 parking spots for the site, which is three. The grading is compliant within access to the front door and the lobby. The parking spaces underneath are tandem. We do have 12 sets, they will be assigned to individual apartment units. So they will be used by one apartment. So that it's gonna function basically as if you had a single car garage and a driveway behind it, and coordinated with the people and the members of that single apartment. We've placed our dumpster pad in the back rear corner, we have a fenced-in area of 10 by 16 feet. It will be covered, as noted on the detail sheet, in compliance with the height. We do exceed the 10 feet required to accessory buildings to primary building.
And why would that be, why are we asking for that design waiver?
The design waiver actually comes into play because we have a retaining wall along the northwest corner of our development. This was done partially for grading purposes, partially for drainage purposes. But mainly to respect the limits of the existing development and encroachment within the wetlands. This dotted line you see here is the limit of the parking that was existing on the site. The wetland buffer is this round line. So all of our improvements stay within what was already developed and will aid in our redevelopment permit with the wetlands. So the wall, retaining wall that we show is maximum four foot height. And the dumpster enclosure is at the corner of the wall. On top of that wall, we're proposing a six-foot fence to enclose the dumpster enclosure. Which per Long Hill standards would combine, we're allowed a four-foot wall with. Which per Long Hill standards would combine. We're allowed a four foot wall within a side yard setback. When you combine the four foot wall with the six foot fence, that is one of the design waivers which we are seeking.
Okay.
The parking spaces, although not allocated on this plan, but it was brought up by your board engineer and/or planner. With the new regulations that were enacted over the summer, there are EV spots required, electric vehicle spots required. At a fifteen percent requirement, one has to be ADA compliant. So we will be incorporating those nine spaces. Three need to be make ready and then they're phased in. So we do agree to include those EV vehicle parking. The other items that I want to just highlight for the board, we have a unique area up in the front on Plainfield Road. We have an eight by eight bus pad. During the variance application, there was considerable discussion as to where any schoolchildren would be picked up, where would the buses stop? This location was chosen to avoid any other driveway conflicts. So a bus parked here to pick up the children would stop the traffic flow on Plainfield Road. And not have anybody making a right if the bus were in front of the main driveway. The entire project, when compared to the existing conditions, has a very minimal increase in impervious coverage. As proposed here on the site plan, we have a three thousand one hundred and twelve square feet increase. So we really designed this to stay within the boundaries of what was there before. Before, as I noted, it was a small building with a lot of parking area, vehicle surfaces as they're now considered. Under proposed conditions, our vehicle surface is decreased quite a bit from twenty four thousand and changed down to about fifteen thousand. And this is part due to the design of the building. We made it a linear building. We're able to put the parking underneath, so they'll be covered with roof. So it's only the asphalt area that would be subject to runoff and stormwater hitting the vehicle surfaces. As we stated, the ground floor retail is nineteen hundred. This is a slight decrease from what was proposed before. Under the bifurcated application, the larger amount of retail warranted more parking spaces. So per the parking calculations, which are in the center of the page here. When we calculate the two one bedroom apartments, twenty two bedroom apartments and two three bedroom apartments. Along with nineteen hundred square feet of retail. Requires fifty seven point three spaces or fifty eight required on site. We maintained the sixty to have an extra two extra spaces on the property. Again, we have a very minimal increase in impervious coverage would be a benefit to the site to maintain those two spaces.
And you've also complied with the lighting standards of the township as well. You want to talk about that a little bit?
I will. I actually show that on a separate lighting plan, so I'll hit that and show the pole locations when we get to that plan.
Sure.
The other requested design waivers are landscaping based. As I noted, we do have the one fence on a wall. The other ones are, we should have one shade tree per ten stalls. Three would be required. We have one. But again, you'll see we have substantial perimeter landscaping proposed, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And lastly, the amount of landscaping within the parking. Rather than putting aisles and islands in the parking, we condensed the design. Tried to, and we did successfully, respect the wetland buffers in the back to the greatest extent that we could. And I'll talk about that a little bit more when I get to the landscape plan.
Alright, so you've covered the design waivers, the three design waivers that are required. No variances are required, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. I'll move on to the grading plan. If there's no questions about the site layout.
Did you, just to remind you, did you address the points brought up in our experts report on pages? Three and four in general comments?
Oh, we did.
We will get to that. I.
Okay.
I just.
I didn't know who was going to do that, that's why.
Catherine, if you could do me a favor and what I'd like you to do is just talk about the, just generally. I would like to just move forward toward the grading plan fairly quickly. And then the lighting and landscaping plan, and then we can go to the reports of the.
Sure, sure. Actually, before I go away, move away from the site dimension plan. I am going to turn to another exhibit, which we submitted to the board. We entitled it PB two. Sorry, I went backwards on my numbers here. During our TCC meeting and some of the, in your experts review letters. They questioned about access to the dumpster in the back. So what I have here is entitled truck turning. It's an SU thirty, a standard garbage truck, a thirty foot moving truck. Entitled PB two dated one twenty seven twenty two.
We're going to make that exhibit A. Where do we leave it? Okay, this will be two. Thank you. That's what we need.
So what's the purpose of this, Catherine?
So what this shows is the turning behind the building to access the dumpster enclosure. So an SU thirty single unit truck can come in, have front loaded into the dumpster area. With the roof, they'll roll out the dumpsters, they'll toss it into the truck. They can back out and pull out to Plainfield Road. So we had a little bit of a bump out in the southwest corner. Not only to help the last spot, leave their spot, but also for truck turning purposes.
So it's your opinion that that's a safe and efficient movement?
That's correct. That's correct. This will also allow a moving truck to turn around when they're moving in and moving out. So it's beneficial for not only the daily or biweekly to be determined trash pickup. But also for moving day.
And let's make it clear to the board, there'll be no tractor trailers accessing this site, correct?
No, not anticipated. It's a very small retail area and apartments.
Right. Okay, so you'll have your box trucks to making deliveries FedEx. And.
Amazon.
Amazon, et cetera.
Correct, correct. I'll flip back to the site plan, and I know there was some questions regarding the trash since we're on that topic. There's internal trash rooms in the building where the trash will be collected. There'll be a privately maintained building, so they will take the trash from a common collection area out to the dumpster area.
Right, and the dumpster area is actually has a roof on it, doesn't it?
That's correct. We like to do that in residential developments. Keeps it cleaner. If you have them open, they tend to be open. Rainwater runs through them, can take some dirty water through the dumpsters. And since we're so close to the wetlands, we thought that was a nice amenity to add to the enclosure.
So from an operational perspective, the manage, the management of John Rocker's team will, someone will be there to actually push the dumpsters out so that they can be picked up by garbage?
That's correct, or coordinated with their garbage hauler.
Correct, okay. So there'll be no damage to the roof. That's, that's really, okay. I know that was a concern of the board engineer.
So moving to the grading. Again, it's a very modest sloped property. We maintained and analyzed the site per all three drainage areas when we did our stormwater management. The front driveway will go out to Plainfield Road. One of the comments from the county engineers, they did want a trench string to collect it before it hit the gutter line. We'll comply with that. We also have proper sight lines, which we have on here, and I show them in a little bit more detail on another plan. Plainfield Road is straight. We have plenty of sight distance where our access is. So again, we've created a fairly flat area for the building and the parking with the grading on the sides to mimic what is naturally occurring now. So we're not taking and moving the high point. We're not taking all the flow from what may have gone to Plainfield and directing it to the back. We meet all the drainage areas as we've analyzed it.
And you and Samantha, the board's engineer, had a discussion about impervious. You have a separate exhibit for that, don't you?
Um, yes, so when we did the existing conditions, you'll see the outline of the rear on the surf. On the survey, it's identified as gravel area. The site has been developed for twenty, thirty plus years with vehicle access in the back. It's highly compacted. So her and I can work out what is maybe a little bit loose, has some permeable capabilities. The also other nice part is the whole front area is actually what is classified as a D soil. So any pervious areas that were there do not have much infiltration qualities. There's a strip of B soils in the back, which has a higher infiltration rate. But we're not doing any of our development in that area. So we'll work that out as to what may be considered impervious under the redevelopment for the DEP regulations. But in the event that we do need to classify as a major stormwater design due to the impervious coverage. I did do an additional exhibit. This one is PB one.
A three.
Thank you.
So PB one is entitled porous pavement exhibit. Just to indicate if this were to be considered a major development by the state standards and stormwater regulations. We would be able to comply. It's slightly different calculations that we would have to do in terms of what runs off the site. Green infrastructure would be a component of it. And one of the green infrastructure options is a porous pavement. So what I've shown here in the shaded area in the parking spaces, slightly in the aisle. We could install porous pavement. It would have gravel underneath for containment. And it would be lined due to a high groundwater condition because we already did do soil tests on the site. And we would collect the roof area as outlined here. And that would satisfy for our quick calculations, a major development if we were to do the stormwater management per those requirements.
So if, if it's, in summary, if you and Samantha agree that it's a minor. This pervious pavement or porous pavement wouldn't be necessary if you have disagreement and you, it's classified as a major. You have a solution that would comply with the major, major development requirements by providing for porous pavement?
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a procedural question? Thank you, and I apologize for the interruption of the Florida testimony, but just no flow, no pun intended. But the stormwater management show, the am I correct in understanding then that there's an anticipation that we may not know the answer to definitively whether it's going to be determined major or minor and whether we're going to use stormwater management plan A or alternative plan B? Before the board is asked to vote and that it's anticipated that that would be subject to the review and approval of the engineer? Or is there an expectation that we're going to get a definitive answer and the board will be able to vote on a stormwater management plan A or B?
Would you like me to chime in quickly?
You know what? I was, I was going to ask two other people, but actually you're my first choice. So if with the chair's permission, go ahead.
No problem. You know, Kathy, I thank you very much for putting together this exhibit and for your testimony so far. I think to answer the question, you know, with the succinctly tonight is, I don't think we would have that answer tonight. And if the board did want that answer tonight, I would have to go with that it is a major development. As of today, you know, Kathy and I had discussed that in order for some of the gravel on site to be considered impervious coverage. She would need to demonstrate through documentation that the conditions on site have been acting, you know, in an impervious manner. Such that they could be considered impervious. To date, have not received that information, so. As of right now, I'm still under the impression that it is a major development. Again, that is possible that that could change depending on what documentation and information could be provided by the applicant's engineer. And I am, you know, more than open to reviewing that information if it is available, you know, to make that final determination.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say it this way. If you're prepared to move tonight, it's a major development.
That makes it even easier.
With my experience with these things, I'd be mighty surprised if we got to vote tonight, but fragile things have happened.
Absolutely.
And the main goal of this exhibit really was to show our site plan would not change. If it were to be declared a major development. This exhibit here maintains all the same curb lines, the same layout, the same grading. It would just be a different design within the limits of those curves.
And Kathy, for the board, could you maybe explain, you know, visually, if this area was turned to porous pavement? Would, would it visually look any different? Would it feel any different? You know, how would that impact the development?
It would look and act the same as normal pavement. You wouldn't know the difference. The real difference would be in the maintenance that would be required for it and if the board were to look favorable, obviously a maintenance manual for any stormwater management would be submitted for your review.
Absolutely, and I think that would be true whether this was a minor or a major development regarding a maintenance manual.
Got the condition, thank you.
There's no more questions regarding that exhibit. I'll flip back to our design plans. Again, just to recap the grading, it's very modestly sloped. We do have the retaining wall in the rear that allows us to get some fill back there. We did some preliminary cut and fill calculations. And the project will require approximately a thousand cubic yards of net fill. To raise the grade in the rear around where the, where the wall will be.
Why don't you move on to the next exhibit, please? Next slide.
Sure, the next slide is sheet S four, our utility plan. So as you can see, as we upgrade and curb the proposed parking, we've also incorporated a new stormwater collection. We'll have B inlets along the curb line to collect and transfer the water into its appropriate locations. You can see here we have some pipes that lead to the back. Well, this design and the major stormwater design will also have an outlet control structure. Here we take advantage of some of the storage within the pipes that we're proposing. Under the major stormwater that storage will be provided within the stone under the pervious pavement. So again, we really looked at it closely in terms of where we were discharging the systems. Not to increase any flow to the south, to the north, or out to Plainfield Road. The building will be serviced by public water. There's a main within Plainfield Road. When we get into the construction documents, we'll size that adequately for both the residential demand and the fire demand. I did have the opportunity to talk to Don, the fire marshal this afternoon. He did not have any objections to the application. He just reserved his comment at the time of building permit if there were any additional things that he may want added or clarified on the plans. The gas service will come from the main in Plainfield Avenue and run to a utility room. We anticipate meters along the northern side of the building. The sanitary sewer will be serviced by one lateral and connection. The sanitary sewer will be serviced by one lateral in connection. Our attorney did speak with the township about the capacity issues, uh, so that those conversations have begun.
But if I might, um, just, I know members of the board, chairman and, uh, Liz and, uh, Samantha, the issue of sewer did come up in your reports. And I have spoken with Mr. Pigeon about that. We had a lengthy conversation. Um, and then also Mr. Warner and I had a lengthy conversation about sewer in light of the, the current condition, the situation with New Jersey American Water. Um, Mr. Pigeon indicated that the new contract calls for an up to four year obligation to provide the sewer. They're currently doing I and I work, New Jersey American Water, but that's not for new service. That's really just to maintain existing service. Uh, so he said, within the next three to four years, um, hopefully sooner, New Jersey American Water will, will be able to provide the necessary sewer capacity. Um, I did talk to Mr., uh, Warner about that. And hopefully it'll be sooner than later. Uh, hopefully there'll be a list that we can place ourselves on. And, and, um, the other issue is one about the vesting uh, of this project because of the weight that we may have to have before sewer. And we can get into that a little bit later.
Thank you.
Um, so that was the sewer gas. Uh, there was some questions about mechanicals and our architect can go into that later on. Um, but I'll touch on it very quickly. The majority of the residential apartment units will be serviced by what's called a magic pack. So they just have vents out the side. The retail and common space on the first floor may have condensers. We do have room to the north side of the property uh, to place those condensers for those common areas versus, um, putting them on the roof for the, there'd be two or three condensers to service the retail and the common areas. We show landings outside the exits right now on the north side of the building. There was some conversations about, well, we're going to have a passive recreation area within the fenced in area outside the building. Will there be any patios in that area? Our stormwater management report did anticipate about five hundred square feet of what we call fluff. Uh, you get little changes or equipment pads during construction. So we believe that'll be adequate for patio if they want to construct it off the back and place any on-grade condensers.
The, the number of condensers o- on that side would be minimal because these would be serviced by magic packs, the units, et cetera, uh, so that, so that then the retail, um, and the open areas would, um, meaning the open space areas, hallways, et cetera. They would be serviced by condensers. It would be roughly two or three roughly, uh, condensers on, on that side.
That's correct.
Okay. Please continue, maybe we can go on to the next, uh, sheet.
Sure, sure. I do see one hand raised, uh.
Mr. Chair, uh, at this time, since we're talking, since we're talking about the north side of the building, uh, looking at the elevation, it shows that there's going to be glass storefronts there. So the retail space, is that going to be a retail space? It says storefront, although you propose a lounge and a gym right there. And with storefront, which is not the nineteen hundred square feet that we're, the parking is being calculated for in the front of the building.
Yes, I'll, I'll let Mr. Soraco talk about that, who's our architect.
Why don't we hold off, uh, then the architect? Okay, thank you.
Uh, flip now, um, obviously soil erosion and sediment control will be per the Morris County SCD requirements. That'll be submitted, uh, for approval pending any approval from this board. Uh, going on to sheet S six, our lighting plan. So when we designed this plan, we did take consideration into our neighbors to the north and the south. Um, the north side of the building will have what's required for building code at each exit. And then the primary part of our parking outside and our lighting is on the southern part. We're proposing seven pole lights. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. These will all have house shields on them so that the light is contained on our site. The foot candles along our south boundary will be zero. Uh, the calculations on this village do take into account a six-foot solid high fence along that property line. Uh, no, one of the comments was to provide a detail for that. We're, we're happy to do that, but, uh, we do have it indicated as a six-foot high solid wood fence. The lighting is in compliance with Long Hill requirements. Uh, we have an average of point eight, minimum of point four in the parking and driving areas.
Right? You want to move on to landscaping?
Sure. So again, here is an unrendered copy of our landscape plan. What we've tried to do, and it's a little clearer.
A particular sheet on the plan set?
It is.
L one.
Thank you.
Landscape plan. So what we've shown here in the grade areas are clusters of trees that are right on the perimeter, on the southern perimeter and the northern perimeter. What we've done is we've interspersed our proposed landscaping around those plants. Uh, they are mature trees, um, in, in good condition as far as we know when we did the site visit. Uh, we're proposing sixty-four trees uh, along the front street trees and the perimeters. These are, uh, mixed between deciduous and evergreens. And then we have eighty-eight shrubs proposed along the foundation in the front, uh, along the entrance way here and some br- ornamental grasses dispersed within the site. So again, the, the passive recreation areas to the north here, it'll be fenced in and also privacy augmented by landscaping. The rest of the area will be maintained long.
Kathy, um, I don't want to cut you short, but I think that you've gone, done a very nice job of going through your plans. You've had an opportunity to review the reports from the engineer, uh, and the planner, correct?
Yes.
What I want you to do is, um, just identify on, in the engineer's report, anything that is a concern or something that you need to talk about. And if we don't talk about it, it means that we will comply, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Uh, again, we did have the benefit of a TCC meeting to work out some of the, the details, the majority. I'm looking at the Mott McDonald letter from the engineer, uh, dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand and one, to begin with. Um, one item which your board engineer, uh, did forward me some additional information I can touch on is sidewalks along pedestrian routes. We do have a, a sidewalk along Plainfield Road proposed. Uh, we've also proposed that to extend up past the two adjacent properties to the existing sidewalk at the corner, uh, at the bank. So that will be reviewed by Morris County. I did have a conversation with them. They did not object to us installing additional off-site, um, sidewalk along the frontage. We do not have any crosswalks proposed. Uh, again, that's going to fall under county jurisdiction. We do have the sidewalk which goes up to a signalized intersection to the north.
That would be comment number nine, um, uh, correct on her report about the crosswalk. And that really, really depends on the county, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. I'm also want to touch on comment nine to pre-provided sidewalks where pedestrian cha- traffic shall occur. We don't have sidewalks within our parking area. Uh, it'll function like a, a typical line of parking that you would see, um, on any site plan. You would park your car, walk along the, the parked cars and enter the building either in the front or I believe there's a, a opening or a door in the rear. It is flat, it is open, uh, it'll have adequate site distance for anybody coming in. Our first, uh, space was set away from the, the intersection for safe ingress and egress. Uh, we do have the crosswalk delineated for the ABA access.
With respect to item number eleven, um, you touched upon this about parking and how the, this would really be pursuant to lease and management about, uh, allocation of parking spaces. And, and where would the customers park for the retail?
Uh, it's going to be mixed-use parking. Uh, they'll take the available spaces. They're not going to be, the exterior spaces are not going to be assigned spaces to the residences. Uh, again, it's going to be privately managed. The only ones that will be assigned are the underbuilding tandem spots.
Okay, and we did agree as part of the use variant, to see even the condition, that it would be a low-intensity user, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, going to number fourteen. Um, we don't have an off-street loading space. It's not required under the ordinance. Um, can you just touch upon if, if FedEx or Amazon did come in? Or, you know, uh, another DoorDash, wh- where, where would they, where would they park?
Uh, the lobby entrance is towards the front of the building, uh, on the south side. I believe they would pull past the crosswalk and then come in the front door with it. Uh, that would give, even if they parked right in front, you would still have room for a car to get off Plainfield Road. So if they were blocking it, it wouldn't cause queuing out on Plainfield Road. Again, it's, it's a, there's not anticipated to be a lot of traffic in and out during the day with the residential use or the retail use. So again, I would, I would think a driver would pull up right by the front door for their convenience. Uh, they'd be able to turn around in the back as I showed on the, the previous exhibit. Um, and again, it's, it's going to be a privately managed site if anything were to become a concern. I'm sure the, the tenants would voice their concerns and the management can come up with a solution.
Okay. And i- is it your opinion that fire access, uh, is safe and efficient? And, and I know that you spoke with the fire official, but, uh, do you think there'll be any concern, uh, as a professional engineer?
I do not, I do not.
Okay. Um, I'm moving all the way through to the items that, you know, we, we circled. Um, we really have no concerns. Is there anything else in, in the engineer's report that you want to touch upon?
Uh, in terms of the engineering, um, no, I think there's some questions about the trash. As I said, it's going to be collected interior and brought out by management.
There was a request, uh, in item number twenty-one for a lighting as-built plan, which is something I, I've not heard of. And I know that you and I have had a discussion about that. Um, we spoke with Samantha about that. I- if, if one is required, a, a lighting as-built would be provided, correct? If in other words, if she asks, if she asks, uh, at once the project is done for an as-built lighting plan, you would comply.
That's correct. If there's any cause of concern upon their inspections, we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay. And everything else, um, I know that Mr. Warner and I need to talk to the board about this issue about, uh, you have an ordinance that, uh, has one, uh, interpretation about the, the duration of use variances. And then in another section, we have to deal with about the site plan and, and the, the vesting on that. But that's not a engineering issue, that's really a legal issue that Mr. Warner and I have spoken about. Do you have anything further?
I do not.
Board members, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, before the board members go, uh, does, uh, Samantha, do you have any questions of, uh, their engineer?
Yeah, a couple of questions and some, some clarifications. Um, thank you for the presentation, Kathy. Uh, I think that was very thorough and I appreciate you going through, you know, each plan and a lot of the comments included in my letter. I'm going to start from the end of my notes, so the things that you testified on most recently, and I'll work my way back to the beginning. Um, this was just a comment I was thinking of, um, recently. The, the six parking spaces that are at the end of the building, are those also assigned? Or only the, the tandem parking spaces are going to be assigned?
Only the tandem because of the use, one in front of the other.
I, I only ask because I, I would think that the six at the end are probably the most desirable for the residents because those are also covered. Is that correct?
They are, they are. And if they choose to assign them or lease them with an apartment, um, they have that right because we have enough parking on grade or underneath. Uh, it was more about the logistics of the, the tandem ones, which would have to be designated.
Understood, I just wanted to clarify that, so thank you. Um, um, in my comment letter, and I know this is the comment that you and I had discussed, um, I believe it was comment number eight where, um, I spoke about Long Hill Township Code, uh, one fifty-one, two E, which states that sidewalks are to be provided where pedestrian traffic shall occur. It's a little bit vague, you know, it doesn't give a exact direction or anything like that. And you did testify, you know, where the sidewalks are proposed, how gen- general navigation of this parking lot will occur. You did talk about the sidewalk extension off of Plainfield Road. Um, my only question is, you know, sometimes in, in similar, uh, layouts and similar developments, we do see, you know, a, a perimeter sidewalk. Um, can you maybe speak about why a perimeter sidewalk would, would not be necessary here? And possibly why, you know, the, the benefits of that maybe don't outweigh the detriments from a, you know, stormwater or disturbance point of view?
Sure, um, if I were to put a sidewalk, it'd be along the front of the parking. Uh, I don't think anybody would utilize it. Uh, they're not going to walk away from the building to walk towards the building. Um, I'm glad you brought that up. There was one other item I did want to note here. Our entrance aisle is twenty-four feet wide. But because we're parallel to the top and how the whole site laid out, typically we would have twenty-four feet for the drive aisle. We have a larger, uh, a wider area. We're actually twenty-nine feet from the face of the building out to the parking spaces. So we're five feet wider than a typical twenty-four-foot aisle. So there is a little, it's not tight. Uh, two cars were parking and somebody was there. The tightest point we have is identified here at twenty-four point four. Again, if you're parking back here, you're most likely use the back door. If you're parking along these twelve spots, I would assume most likely use the front door, uh, where we do have the, the widened area. So although we're not putting a sidewalk along the front of the spots, which I, I think would be very seldomly used, um, it, I do see it as a safe pedestrian area to access the building.
And you did mention that the, the grades in this parking lot are relatively flat such that, you know, any car driving in and out would not have any issues seeing over a high pointy or seeing around a corner and nothing of that nature?
That's correct. We have a couple of feet drop, uh, it's clear as day.
Excellent, that is great. Um, uh, the off-site sidewalk that you spoke about, I believe you said it's going to end at the bank property up the street. Is there an existing sidewalk at the bank that this will be adjoining to?
There is, there is.
So at this point, they would be able to travel all the way to the intersection?
Up to the cover sheet, we have the one residential to the north. Here's the, the bank, their sidewalk ends at the, the property line to, um, properties to the north. So we would meet their existing sidewalk.
Excellent, so you're really extending it over the two neighboring properties, it looks like, or is that just?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Um, on the topic of mechanicals, I know we talked about, um, some of the condenser units and things. How about an emergency generator? Is there an emergency generator proposed for the site? And if, and if you're not the witness to answer the question, just, just let me know.
I believe our, uh, architects could more, uh, can answer that with more confidence.
Okay, great, no problem. Um, we'll flip back a sheet to some other questions. The building will be sprinkled, will have sprinklers?
Again, I'll defer, I, I'll defer to the architect.
Okay. Um, cut fill, you testified that there will be about a thousand cubic yards of fill being brought into the site, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, based on the amount of, uh, material that fits in a truck, you estimate about how many truckloads of material that would be coming to and from the site down Plainfield Road? You know, are we talking about hundreds of trucks? Are we talking about fifty truckloads?
If they're twenty-yard trucks, twenty-yard trucks would be fifty, fifty loads.
Fifty loads. And would you anticipate during construction that those would all be at one time? Or would that have to be spread out, um, you know, amongst a couple, a couple of days and a couple of phases of the clearing and grading of the site?
So again, we've done some soil tests. Um, I don't know how much So again, we've done some soil tests. Um, I don't know how much of the excavated material will be usable. So I would assume they may be bringing in while they're hauling it out. Um, that would all have to be determined. Uh, it's also based on availability. If they can get it early on, they'll bring it in.
Okay, thank you. Um, we talked about the stormwater. I think you answered all my questions regarding that. And as we spoke about, you know, if we continue through today, we probably will consider this a major development. If uh we carry to another date and you and I have further discussions and further documentation, we might stick with the the plan that's there today. You had mentioned that the county requested a trench um grate across the front driveway. Were there any other significant changes or modifications to the site plan that the county has requested that are not reflected on this plan that the board is seeing today?
Uh, there were not. Again, this was our second submission. We did submit our variance plan to them just for a checklist item. And I had conversations with them. So their their specific comment was to catch the the driveway runoff before it hits the curb. So I would envision a trench drain. Um, otherwise, the majority of them are construction details.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I'm sure county standard construction details they were probably looking for.
Correct, correct. Um, and and just some placement of the inlets. Unfortunately, there is a low point in Plainfield Road right in our entrance. So without re-grading the whole road, um, I'll have to work that out with them. Because we do have an existing B inlet in the curb, we're gonna convert to an an A inlet. Intersection.
There'll be some minor improvements needed for those existing inlets to, uh, you know, retrofit them in order to accommodate the new driveway and things?
Correct, correct.
Um, while we're on the topic of the driveway, I think this was one of my first questions. You described how you aligned the center line of the new driveway with the center line of the Valley Mall driveway across the street. Are both driveways from Valley Mall and from this site, are they both stop-controlled?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's see, again, going back to earlier in your testimony when you talked about modifying the site plan to meet the EV um requirements. So if uh if I got you correctly, nine total EV will be needed at the end of the project, three to begin. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe it's thirty percent, thirty percent, and thirty percent of the fifteen percent of the total.
Right.
So fifteen to sixty would be nine, so three, three and three.
And and where where do you envision those three spaces to be?
Uh, those will have to work out the locations. Uh, the only one that I know is one will have to be one of the handicap spaces.
Okay, and that charging equipment will fit in the buffer area on the other side of the parking lot without an issue? I think they're, I think they're pretty, they've gotten those charging equipment down to a pretty small package these days.
Or so, yeah.
And they're not quite uh that large. So, um, in in the beginning of your testimony, when you spoke about the design waiver that relates to the four-foot-high wall with the six-foot-high fence in the corner where the um, yeah, exactly where the um trash area is. Is it fair to say that that by utilizing a wall there rather than trying to grade it, that results in less disturbance to the property, less disturbance to the wetlands buffer and potentially less disturbance to even wetlands themselves?
That's correct.
So i- if you had to grade it out in lieu of using that wall, there would be more disturbance to a total on the property because of that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, we really tried to save, stay in, you can see I have it labeled here, existing edge of parking. With the use of that wall, we stay within that disturbed area.
Perfect. Okay, great. Um, last question, and this goes right back to, I think, the first topic you testified on regarding your DEP permits. Um, you you have already submitted the LOI for the site?
We have the LOI.
Oh, you have the LOI for the site. So everything's been done and has the redevelopment permit been submitted? Or are you waiting until, you know, action is taken by this board before that would be submitted?
We're waiting to make sure there wasn't any significant changes. But it was designed with that in mind for redevelopment. We've been consulting with a wetland consultant.
Okay, so as far as um DEP, you don't anticipate them coming back with any requests for any major changes? You believe that the site plan in its present condition will be permitted under the redevelopment uh regulations from DEP?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I think those are all my questions for now, Kathy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, do you have any questions?
I just have a a few short questions, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, thank you for your presentation. I also thought it was very thorough. Um, I have a couple of questions actually about the fencing. So there's proposed fencing along the north and the south. And um, do you, is it gonna be, you know, identical, the same uh materials, the same colors, that sort of thing?
I would assume so, yes. And and we could agree to that.
Okay, and and do you have any sense of what kind of materials or the colors that uh you would anticipate using?
Uh, we identified it as a solid wood fence. Uh, you, if the board has any preference, I'm sure we can uh work that detail out.
And then the other question I have is um where the fence sort of turns a corner and kind of comes along the front yard? That I would assume is gonna be four feet, right? Because we don't permit higher than four feet in the front yard.
Um, it's not within the front yard setback and it's not in front of the building projection. Uh, we were doing it kind of more for privacy of our our residents in the the recreation area, but if that's required to be four feet, uh, we can comply.
I mean, that I, Mr. Chairman, I leave that up to the board. I think there's technically, uh, Ms. Miller may be right.
What line are we talking about here?
There there's a fencing that comes, it kind of cuts in, and that would also be six.
That's even with the front of the building, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's it that's a question for the board, really. And then I think other question that I have um has to do, a similar question to what Samantha asked with regard to the retaining wall, is that the other two design waivers that you're seeking for, um, and not, you know, the landscaping in the parking area. Is it fair to say that you, uh, if you were to to comply with those regulations, it would actually result in a greater um area of disturbance? Um, because you would have to make up that ground by going further into the rear yards or the side yards?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my only questions.
Thank you.
Get a couple before the board members go.
Sure, uh, you can unshare your screen. Do you need the screen up, Steve?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, you can share it.
Or whoever had it. Um, thank you. Just on on that uh last uh couple of points on on and questions. On the last uh issue with respect to the six-foot fence that might, might be in the front yard. Uh, legally, the board has the authority under the notice that was provided with the catch-all provision to, if it deems that relief necessary to grant that relief in the context of this hearing. Uh, so I just didn't want to lose sight of that. Um, I guess it hasn't been determined whether they need that relief or not for that six-foot fen- uh fence that might be in the front yard. And if it is in the front yard, I don't know if the applicant's gonna drop down for or ask ask for the two uh extra and and for the relief, but the board can grant it if the board so desires. Uh, if the one that questioned by the applicant, number one. Number two, there with me. I can't work through my notes backwards as well as Sam does. She's a better course examiner than I am. Uh, she's got me both on the engineering and the attorney skills. Uh, the uh, up there with me one second, let's see. One issue I did, or one question I did have, uh, the twenty-four tandem parking spaces under the building, and I don't think we need Mr. Plinyak with all due respect, Mr. Plinyak, for this one. Uh, the um, you said that they uh act as a uh similar to a driveway, or, you know, the same family can back out and then, or, you know, uh, uh, j- uh, jockey the cars around perhaps. Um, but, so are you signing those, assigning those twenty-four spaces to twelve of the twenty-four residential units or is it one space per one residential unit?
It would be to twelve units.
So twelve.
Spaces.
Twelve units would be allocated to the twenty-four underneath, one in front of the other. So each pair would go to one of, one apartment.
So what about the other twelve apartments?
They would be on-grade parking.
Okay, okay. So it really is, those two really will be for the same unit?
Yes.
Uh, when I say those twenty-four, um, uh, two uh, uh, of those twenty-four would correspond to the same unit. So the tandem spaces can be utilized by the same occupants of the same year. Okay, um, that clarifies that. Thank you. Uh. Thank, that, that's all I had at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Now, uh, board members, any board member questions of uh their engineer? Yes, Jerry?
Uh, unmuting, excuse me. So, um, the the first question I have is about parking. And I have an echo, so I just have to make an adjustment on my audio, sorry. The way I look at the parking is if we have twelve of those units that have dedicated tandem parking spots and the rest of them are going to be, we'll call it in the general admission parking, right? Wha- what would prevent people that have assigned parking from using the general admission parking over a matter of convenience? For instance, if the, if the apartment is shared by two people with cars and they are one of the units that are assigned parking, one of the twelve units, and one person arrives home early and there's plenty of general admission parking available. And they know that they're going to have to leave first in the morning and so they don't have to go out in the morning when it's seven degrees or later at night to juggle cars. They just park in the general admission because it's there and well. And then when the other person comes home, they park one car in the reserved tandem parking. And that could be where there's twelve empty spaces every night in the assigned tandem parking. And there's lack of, uh, I would say, available parking in the general admission parking combined with the residence and if there is a commercial use, especially if it's a commercial use, that has the same hours as uh, evening hours, let's call it, as when all the people are generally home and weekends. So wh- what is to prevent that?
So, um, as you've heard, it's going to be a privately held and managed site. If they become, parking becomes a shortage and an issue, I'm sure the residents will let the management become aware of it. But with the shared parking and the the retail use, we would anticipate that the peaks be non-occidental. As the people from the retail space or office space, whichever it may be, are leaving for the day, people are coming home at night for the residential. The residential component of the required parking spaces is actually forty-eight spaces. And we have sixty on site. So we do have an abundance of spaces if the retail is closed. So again, I I believe that there's extra spaces on the site. We did keep the number at sixty, even though we reduced the amount.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I wanna make sure I understand the numbers. The sixty requirement, what is that for? Is that just for the residential?
No, that's actually for both.
That's residential, the commercial or any type of retail use?
It's a total.
We have sixty proposed spaces on the site.
Right? And that's, you're saying that is what the requirement is for that number of units with that number of bedrooms and also the number of square foot or use for those types of retail uses in there and commercial?
That's correct. So the the required for the residential are forty-eight spaces.
And how many do you have? You only have tw- twenty-four?
No, we have a total of sixty on the site.
Right, but you said the required for the residential is forty-eight?
For all twenty-four units would require forty-eight parking spaces on the property.
And you have twenty-four dedicated solely to the residential?
Correct, and then thirty-six on grade.
Right. So a- again, you could say you complain to the manager, but if that, once it's built, there's really not much that can be done, especially like I said, if it's an attractive or what, high in demand, you know, resource there, whether it's retail or be, whether it's an exercise club or something like that. We don't know what they're gonna put in there, but anything can go.
So if I could say, this is, this is not an unusual issue for management. They put it in their leases. It's not an uncommon thing for it to to be done. Um, so Mr. Aronio is not creating something that's new here. It's been done time and time again by this applicant, by others that I represent. It's not an unusual circumstance.
And I said it when you were uh in the use variance phase, that, you know, you create awkward parking situations and it doesn't always work. Doesn't always work. I I I don't see how this would not fail.
Uh, any more questions, Jerry?
I do have questions. So we're gonna talk about, I guess, the variances. And waivers requested.
There are no variances, Mr. Aronio. There are only design waivers.
Design waivers, Jerry.
Okay. So I wanna know about, the first thing I wanna know about is outdoor recreation. I I wasn't sure what the engineer said in her testimony about any planned or reserved space for outdoor recreation. Is there any?
We have a green space on the north side of the building for instance. It's labeled as a passive recreation area.
Is that in the wetlands?
No.
So it's, it could go with any level of impact that the residents or the owner or whatever person wants to put in there?
We're anticipating lawn, possibly a small patio.
And will that be accessible to the community or just the residents of that unit?
It would be for the residents of the property.
Okay, is there a possibility to open that up to the community?
The answer is no. And I'll tell you why, mister, because there's gonna be a fence in the front of that. You may have heard that it may be four feet or six feet. Um, it's gonna be a six-foot fence to 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 act as a privacy fence. So it's not, it's not accessible to the community.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking for you to consider that is because when we approved the use variance, the testimony was that you were trying to be conforming to the town's desire to have a walkable community where everything's connected. And so it sounds like you don't wanna be connected to the community. You wanna be walled off from the community.
So I think that we should have.
In that area, we're commit, we're, we we call that our emerging town center. And in the emerging town center, part of the master plan requirements are areas for open outside community involvement. So in exchange for your density and the three stories and all of that, I think it's a small ask to have the town have in that, in that high-density area, some part of green area that's accessible to them.
Not really sure what you mean by walkability. This is a private development. The walkability issue was a planning issue that walking to the downtown, it, this is a private community. I can't. Let me finish, please. I can't imagine that the other board members would feel. And maybe I'm wrong, but we'll have our 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 planner testify that anybody off the street can come in through a gate and and sit down and have a smoke uh on a patio there. I I don't think that that's.
Smoking is generally outlawed in most places, so I wouldn't use that as example, but the example that was used in the testimony for the use variance was a a a walkable community. We needed residents to support our downtown. And I was just thinking that, you know, this is an open area that.
What does this have to do with an amenity? This is an amenity for the residents of the of the building. There is a walkable community because there's a sidewalk that leads all the way to the, to the, to the downtown. I'm not sure that you're saying, suggesting that we allow anybody off the street to come in and open a gate and sit and sit on our patio where where the residents are. Is that what you're really talking about?
Well, tha- that's the philosophy of the cell. What the unit was designed to do was to bring.
That's not what we talked about. That's not what the planner mentioned at all. Um, so the planner talked about walkability to the downtown and to shopping, not walkability for someone to come in and use the amenity space.
Okay, then there's something else for recreation. We like to connect our town. Again, you're you're gonna be what we're calling the emerging town center, and you have the open space behind your building. I know it's wetlands, but wetlands is usable in some air, in some ways, such as paths. You're connecting to an area behind you with, through Bay Street. You're connecting to an area behind you with, through Bay Street and Poplar Avenue, which is our Little League field. You may understand the behavior of people. They like to walk around town, especially when they're going to games and that sort of thing. I would recommend some type of path to bring your residents to that part of town, as well as bring other people around town. You're talking about the sidewalk down to, down to PNC. So it's a safety issue. Get people off the road, get them off Valley Road, and get them on to some safer means of biking and walking. Pedestrian traffic should go through that type of a path. I would like you to consider that.
I would just ask the board members to seriously consider what that really means, is like, people are going to be walking through wetlands. Kathy, do you have any concerns with what Mr. Aronio is suggesting?
People walk through wetlands all the time. Forty-two percent of our town is the great swamp, and we do it all the time. In our parks and the great swamp, it happens.
Just to clarify, you wanted some way of those residents potentially to walk through a non-traffic area to get to the ball field and to get to ShopRite, things like that.
So I could explain myself. The newer additions to the master plan elements call for this. They want the town to be connected through non-street traffic. They want off-street pedestrian traffic to connect the areas. And I think it's reasonable, because it's a large development. It's the largest multifamily development in the town, okay? And for that little thing to get to ShopRite, Little League Field and all of that, get people off a Valley Road, which we know is unsafe. We know we had a child death at that intersection. We don't want that. We want people off the streets.
Well, first of all, it's not the largest multifamily that's planned. You have the Checkio site, so that's just not accurate. And the other thing is.
It's the largest one that's approved.
This, this is a property that is a private property to allow people to walk through wetlands and then into, onto a driveway and then, or into.
Well, it's not a private residential development. You have commercial and retail going on there. It's mixed use.
Like, someone will come in, pull in, and go into the retail, but they're not going to walk into the wetland areas.
No, but the residents may choose to walk to ShopRite that way.
I leave that to the board, but I think it's, it's a little bit, a little bit strange. I don't think. Kathy, what is your opinion?
Again, there's not a direct public open space behind it. I wouldn't want to introduce the public coming through the property and the project. Mr. Aronio has already expressed some concerns about parking, although we meet the requirements from the site. What would stop somebody from driving to our site and using a cut-through? So I agree with you, Mr. Layer, that it's a private development for the benefit of the residents that live there. And that's the intention to the north.
I think what Jerry was more likely saying is that the residents of those properties, if they had children that were, belonged to the Little League, or they wanted to take a walk to ShopRite, may be more inclined to take a path through the back of the property, down one of the side streets, across the street next to ShopRite, to go in as opposed to walking down Plainfield and across Valley. It would be more of a convenience for them than public use. I don't think too many public people would use it. I think that's.
I agree with that. Thank you for that, for rephrasing my suggestion there. Thank you.
Well, you know, we can, we can explore that.
Okay.
Our planner and our engineers far is the feasibility of that, because there are paths through wetlands, and that, that may be something that the residents may have an accommodation that they might appreciate. And kids could ride their bicycles to the ball fields and stay on Valley Road.
Correct. Get them off the Valley Road, because I don't feel comfortable pushing kids to Valley Road on bikes or as pedestrians.
You know, we would have to explore that to make sure that there's no streams going through there or nothing, without having to traverse any dangerous areas.
I know, I know the area pretty well. It's wet. So I don't know what you, what has to be done. It's not that complicated. There are no streams, though. There's no tributaries to the river in that area. I know pretty well.
All right, so.
Jerry, I would, I would think your, your idea is maybe an elevated pathway? Is that what you're thinking? I mean, those are typically what you. Yeah, elevated pathways or boardwalks are something we. Yeah, typically for permitting purposes, I've seen elevated boardwalks or elevated pathways be permitted in wetlands in that manner, obviously, because that limits the disturbance by you only have the piles and the footings disturbed instead of the whole pathway.
The main block is full of walkways.
That's a great example.
Different regulations.
Different regulations, yeah. Not, not the same as the redevelopment permit. It's a totally different section of.
We would need a separate general permit to do that.
Yes, correct.
Kind of act as an attractive nuisance, frankly, to, to let people walk through that. I, I have real concerns from a legal perspective about that.
We do it other parts of the town. It's done.
I don't think too many people outside of those residents are going to be using it, but we can discuss that. Any other board members have questions?
I have four questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry. I wanted to give someone else a chance before you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you, it's 9:06.
All right, before we go on, let's take a short 10-minute break just to get a little, you know, we always stretch our legs, go to the bathroom, get something to drink, and we back exactly at 9:15, making it a nine-minute, all right?
We'll see how everybody adheres to 9:15.
Aloha.
Yeah, and so then I said, hold my gun while I cut his throat.
Funny.
I, I don't know. Well, what you heard must have been the TV or something. I don't know, I don't know.
One big time, we're going to be recording when you say that.
No, no, not yet, right?
It hasn't started quite yet.
I'm a gambler, not that big, though.
John and Steve, you there?
That noise.
Yep, we're here.
All right. Jerry, how many more questions do you have?
Two more questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first question is. It's about.
We're still getting.
First question is about streetscape. We have sidewalks going to PNC. Are the sidewalks going to Metzler Place also? And my apologies, I just received my plans today, and I haven't gotten through all of them. But on the sidewalk that's going in front of the building and to PNC, will that be going to Metzler Place also? That's the first question.
No, it's going from our new driveway north.
New driveway north? So it won't go to Metzler?
Correct.
Okay, is there a reason for that not going to Metzler?
The primary goal was to connect this to, this project to the existing sidewalk network to the north.
Right, but in the, in the, the history of the town is whenever projects are completed, especially in commercial areas or high-density residential areas, the sidewalk goes in front of the entire project, and that is because we are trying to build a sidewalk network. So for future development and future use, even if you don't intend to use it for your building right now, it could be useful for other people at some point in the future. Like, we talked about the goals of a walkable community and a walkable downtown. Sidewalks are the safest way to do that. And so my recommendation is to put sidewalks all across your, the frontage of your property on Valley Road, I'm sorry, on Plainfield Avenue.
Would the applicant have an objection to that if the board so chose to?
We have to take that under advisement, Mr. Chairman, because it, it doesn't jive with what we testified about during the use variance application to do that. So we have to, we have to think about that.
Okay.
Well, why would that, can I have an opinion about that from our legal expert? Because would that have to, would that change anything of the use theme or?
Well, I'm interested to hear applicants' counsel's position with respect to say, it was, if it was, if this lack of a sidewalk was a material condition of the use variance approval, I don't know.
Not that I know of.
No, but, but it's, it's something new that's being brought up by Mr. Aronio that was not part of the variance plan that was identified and presented at that time, so.
At the time of that application, we were told that details would be in this part of the project, not in the use variance part. And I might have actually asked for a sidewalk plan and was told that we would talk about that later. We could check into that.
For a sidewalk plan, Mr. Aronio, but you did, we did talk about a sidewalk leading from this site to the downtown. We never talked about going to Metzler.
Pardon me, but I would like to back Jerry on this one. I do remember the conversation being held that a sidewalk would be prepared in front of the entire property, especially to tie in to the sidewalk to the north.
Well, there's two different things here. If we want a sidewalk just in front of their property, it's not going to be to Metzler. If we just want it in front of their property, it's going to be to a border of their property. So it's one thing to ask them to put it in front of their building. It's another to go in front of other people's property. So that's two different things, Jerry. I mean, you know, I have no problem with requiring the whole length of their property, but I don't know how much we can make them put it in front of someone.
And I agree with you. I think that's reasonable. And I agree with you. I think that's reasonable. I, I, I think that's absolutely reasonable. I would like to see it go to the corner, but hey, it's reasonable to not ask them to do that. So.
If, if the question is, is it going to be in front of our property? That's a, that's a reasonable request. If you're asking. Okay, I, I thought you were asking us to go further down the other way.
Oh, I, I think.
Personally, I would like to see that for the safety of our community. I would like to see that. But it's reasonable to ask you to do it in front of your property only, and I understand that. So it just ends at some, you know, arbitrary point at the end of your property. Yes, that's, that's fine.
I'm just so we're clear though, then Mr. Lehrer, is it no longer under advisement? It's something the applicants can stipulate to with respect to it being in front of their property?
Kathy, is, is that something we can engine from an engineering perspective do?
We could extend the sidewalk to the south. It's approximately forty feet from our driveway to the property line.
That would help people who live further down the street to leave us having access to additional sidewalk.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for that accommodation or that satisfaction of the ask. I appreciate that. The next one is continuing with the streetscape and the sidewalks. One of the goals of the town, you see this all over our master plan and the beautification committee and everyone we talk about it, we talk about lights, we talk about benches. And we talk about, you know, when we build things so they fit with the character of our community. And you'll see that in some areas of the town, we have started to identify that area such as we'll call it downtown Sterling or Main Avenue. And you'll see the, the streetlights and the benches and the, the unique type of sidewalk we have there. Would it be too much to ask for some, some beautification in that area? Such as a nice streetscape light with some benches and maybe even a bike rack somewhere along there, you know, something.
Are you talking along the sidewalk area? Are you talking about the sidewalk area?
Yes, I'm talking about the whole sidewalk from PNC to the end of it now. So, so the sidewalk is, again, we're, we're trying to satisfy the goal of the master plan of becoming a walkable community interconnected downtown and everything. So if we're going to promote that, I think it's appropriate to put the, the stuff that people need when they do that. An elderly person may need a rest on the way home from a long night downtown. So there may be a bench here and there. We may have, you know, it may be too dark for some people that can't see well at night. So maybe we should have some streetscape lighting that, you know, beautifies the area and add some functionality. I, I think that's, I, I think that's kind of normal to have.
Again, Jerry, I, I would, I would agree with you, but we, I, I don't think we can make them do anything beyond their property line. Because it's.
Yeah, but it would be a nice, I think it would be a nice gesture and very low cost.
You know, Mr. Aronio, why don't you let us consider to put a bench or two, but, but to put lights is, I, I don't, I think that's beyond our ability to do, because then we would start talking about pro rata shares and things like that. We're extending beyond our property line. If you want us to put a bench or two, you know, I, I understand what your concern is, and, and I, and I think that we can talk to our architect and engineer to accommodate your concern.
Okay.
Are there streetlights? Are there streets? Is there streetlights in those area? I think there is some street lighting in that area.
But it's not the downtown type, you know, community.
No, I know that, but then again, what their attorney said is true. Who's going to.
The intersections have them. Yeah, the intersections have the lighting.
Good point, Mr. Aronio. We'll, 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 we'll come up with something, a couple of benches or something to help it.
And if you can put it in some landscape lighting where the sidewalk intersects your property and stuff, you can do something like that. Decorative, nice, something like that. So thank you for that. And one more thing. It's about the, the shade trees. So we talked about a waiver request, and I think the, the ordinance says, you know, five percent of the interior portion of parking areas containing at least ten stalls require a certain number of shade trees. And I think that you're asking for, for less. Is that right?
Yeah, we're about two percent, maybe two and a half percent. And the reason is because Kathy and I think Samantha agree that it would cause more disturbance. And I think we're trying to create less disturbance to the area and the neighbors than, than more disturbance. And that's why there's somewhat, and I'm not going to speak for Samantha, but I think there's consensus that it creates more disturbance to do that. That's why we're asking for the waiver.
But you're concentrating your trees along the border to block the view.
Correct, correct.
I would like to ask Samantha's opinion on that because my personal like ask, and I'm not an engineer, right? I don't have any technical experience here, but I, but I know a thermal island when I see one, and that's what this looks like to me. So the shade tree rule is functional, completely functional, and it's to sort of mitigate all of that blacktop that we're going to. So I'd like to hear Samantha's opinion on that. If we can squeeze in the, the number of trees required to conform with that, even if we get a partial, you know, shade of an area, if they're on the, you know, that if they're on the outskirts of the parking area, but part of the tree shades part of the lot.
Right. And Kathy, I just want to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, but by, by shade tree, it is the ordinance specific definition of a shade tree that you're asking for exemption from. It's not that you're just planting one tree. Is that correct? Specifically shade trees. There's, there's an abundance of other shrubs, arbor, arborvitae and other trees that may not be considered a shade tree. So perhaps, you know, kind of going back to that, maybe potentially we can look at swapping, swapping species somewhere so we can, we can get those appropriate shade trees in. That might be something we can look at.
Absolutely. We actually do break it down on the landscape plan for A, Bs and Cs and the percentage of trees and the number of trees that we require for the Long Hill ordinance.
And I think so. Which is the one, one shade tree that is proposed? Can you tell us what that species is? Do you have that handy?
We've got eastern red buds, red maples, some dogwoods and honey locusts. We, we have the benefit of Don Farnell is our landscape architect who lives in Long Hill and knew the code very well. So we left it up to his, his expertise.
Yeah, well, potentially then, and you know, I'm in agreement that maybe we can, we can take a closer look at that and see if he can, you know, adjust anything, maybe swap it around and, and try and, try and get it to meet that ordinance. Because I believe you're only short by two shade trees. You need three and you have one.
Correct.
Plenty of trees, but.
Right, we would have to create islands within the parking area, which would move our, our curb lines to the west.
We do have the existing, we do have the, the island in the back. Maybe that one could be maybe just be widened by a foot or so. And then the other island by that inlet where your outlet structure is, maybe that one could be accommodated back there. Those are the, you know, you, you kind of have three islands already. So maybe there's a tweak slightly to, to fit a tree. I'm not sure. That's probably your, your best bet. And if we can get one in each of those three islands, we might be able to satisfy that, that criteria.
Sure. We have them at the perimeter. We can absolutely shift them around if, if you think that would be a positive result.
Yeah, I think that's.
And I think it would eliminate the need for, you know, a waiver request. So any opportunity to do that, especially if it's not, you know, a, a large change or, you know, a major, you know, design overhaul, which I do not believe this would, this would be. I think this could be accommodated with some fairly minor tweaks and some curb lines.
Thank you, Samantha. And thank you to the applicant for considering that. And I have a high degree of confidence in both you and Don Farnell. So I think it'll be all right. Thank you very much. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jay. I'm sure that will be all for tonight. Scott and Tom, you both have questions, right? Scott, go ahead. I'll let you go first.
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. It's a legal question. Mr. Hayne was not, if I'm not mistaken, if Mr. Hayne was recused himself under the use variance application, if I'm not mistaken.
No, it wasn't Mr. Hayne.
No, it's Gary Gionox.
That was Jerry.
I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. I take it back.
Yes. He, he takes no offense to being confused.
Okay, is it up to me?
Yes.
So I have a couple of things. I'm going to start at the end and come back and it's a big circle. So last time we met, my big concern was about traffic. And we were talking about the dual use variance. And I was told there was not going to be retail space. It was going to be a couple of small offices that will not have a lot of traffic during the day. Now I see there's one small retail space in the front. Now I'm going to circle back to the traffic. My big concern is has the attorney builder engineer, has anybody traveled on Plainfield Avenue between seven thirty in the morning and nine in the morning or four in the afternoon and five thirty in the afternoon? My reason is, I'll tell you why. I travel this street a lot, especially at seven thirty in the morning because there is a school bus driver shortage because of COVID. And I need to bring my son to Watchon Hills. Now, what I'm getting at is the Goddard School, which is fully operational now, which was built about a year, two years ago, is their parking lot is next to the Valley Mall side entrance, which if you travel those times and you're going southbound on Plainfield Avenue, if there's two, one or two or three cars trying to make a left-hand turn into the Goddard School, I have seen traffic backed up to Valley Road at the traffic light. Now you do have people trying to pull out of Valley Mall making a left. They cannot do so because there's people making a left into Goddard School. Thus, in the evening, you said there's going to be sixty or forty-eight cars, could be sixty because now you have a retail space in your property. They're going to be coming home in the afternoon, four o'clock, four thirty, five, five thirty, making a left into your property, which Goddard School is a catty corner to your property and to the entrance exit to your property, which is directly across from the Valley Mall side entrance. So you have people trying to pick up their kids at the Goddard School, making a left. They cannot do so because of oncoming traffic. Now you have people coming northbound on Plainfield Avenue, trying to make a left into your property, which they cannot do so because of traffic tie-ups. Now you also have people coming out of Valley Mall who want to make a left, who cannot do so. Now, that is backed up to Valley Road, which we know several years ago, there was a young girl that was killed by an oncoming vehicle. There is another obstacle in this whole scenario with those hours. Long Hill.
Mr. Hayne, can I ask a question? I just want.
Hold on.
We have a traffic consultant. I'm not sure this is engineering.
Can we wait? Can we hold those questions to the traffic person? Because these are not engineering correct questions.
One of the things you said, Mr. Hayne, I, I wanted to read the resolution. You said that it was going to be office use. I'm, I'm reading the resolution itself. It says that, but I'm talking about page four. This lawyer testified describing the proposed development. The first floor of the proposed building will contain two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of retail space. And then one of the conditions in the board's resolution, it was the one, actually the last condition says the applicant shall limit the proposed commercial uses on the first floor of the building to low intensity uses to the reasonable satisfaction of the board. So when you talk about office use, I don't recall that at all.
Well, that I do recall because I was talking about traffic and I'm not sure who was testifying at that time. And they said because it, it, it would be office use, there's not a lot of traffic use with that time. I could be wrong. We can go back and look at the tapes, but I do remember that because this was one of my major concerns. And again, nobody's looking at this. When you go to Goddard School, you're, the, the road is not wide enough to pass by anybody. This is a major, major traffic concern. And I am on this road. I don't know if the attorney builder engineer has been on this at those times. I've been on it multiple times, many days, and it is bumper to bumper, and it's becoming more of a problem.
Scott, that is a valid point, but the, their engineer was not the traffic person. And I, I agree, I liked your questions, but do we wait to direct them to their traffic expert? Because that might be a person more adequately. If he can or cannot answer it, at least that's the person who we should ask that.
Okay, I agree.
Engineering, do you have any engineering questions for the engineer about the building, the parking and things like that?
I, I know it all kind of goes together and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the town with that. And I then.
No, no, I, and I appreciate your concern. I just don't want to put the engineer on the spot that she's not the traffic person. You know, that's kind of.
Will there be a traffic study is what I'm.
They do have a traffic expert.
We have an expert. So I can, Mr. Correct, Mr. Chairman, there was a traffic study done as part of the use variance application, which is certainly part of the record and in this overall case. And he talked about peak hour trips. He talked about distribution. He talked about the volumes. It's all, it's all in the record.
Yes, I know that, but you know, things, things do change, situations do evolve. So perhaps Mr. Scott's observations have based upon newly observed situations that your expert may want to comment on.
Sure, absolutely.
Because.
I just want to say that the entrance exits of your building is directly across from the side entrance to Valley Mall and right next to the Goddard School, not to mention PNC Bank, which is just north of that.
Right.
So.
It, it, yeah, well, Scott, I, I appreciate that, but just hold your, your.
Okay.
Traffic discussion till we get to the traffic and, and then, you know, that, that's a valid question because things evolved. Guarded school got busier, things changed. And, and we'll deal with that.
Fair enough. Okay.
Great. Thank you. I will, I will direct us to this Lewis depiction of on S one. Do you show the, the ingress egress? Okay, driveway. A little bit further to the south than you do.
Yeah, why don't you pull that plan up, S one?
No, no. I'm joking, I'm joking.
That way we know, yeah. Yeah, just hold it up to your camera, right?
Yeah. Is that page S one? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll, you'll see that the, that almost mimics, if it doesn't actually, the original plan, that is the original plan, is it not?
No, this is the existing condition.
That's the existing, that's existing.
Oh, I, I see. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that because I, I look at the next.
There's the plan.
On S two, we show both. You'll see that we shifted it towards the north. The dash line is the old curb line.
Thank you for taking away my, my confusion. All right.
Another question to do with you, Tom.
Well, there, there are pills for that now.
Yes.
I'm not taking any pills. We, we talked about, we talked about the, the root of garbage trucks or waste management trucks to the back. Has anybody measured for fire trucks?
Kathy, why don't you pull up A two, if you won't mind? Which is the PB five.
Yeah, there you go.
PB two.
I don't know the length of a, of a normal fire truck, especially for a three-story building.
So typically for the larger trucks, they will not pull them in to a site like this and be adjacent to a building due to the fall zone. So a large truck most likely would set up on Plainfield Road. This is an SU single unit thirty-foot truck. So ambulance, a small truck, small tri, fire truck, but any larger trucks would set up, I would imagine, in Plainfield Road.
Okay, we happen to have a fire expert on board. He can, he can inform us later.
But I, I, and I don't want to bring up topics as, as an expert and I don't want to comment on that. But fire engines would go in there at some point. It would be a, they could turn around similar to what that garbage truck's doing, but it would be tough. But once you're in, you can back out. I mean, it's not a big deal.
You got the lights.
As long as you can get in.
Okay, I'm gonna. Well, let me touch on two things. The first one is the, the tandem store, the tandem garage you have. Well, let me touch on two things, the first one is the, the tandem store, uh, the tandem garage you have. Uh. What is to, and I don't know if this matters or not, but it does to me. What would keep a person who, or family that rents out the, the, the two-slotted garage space? From using the, the space in the back. Like a, I don't know, a wood shop or a place to leave their stuff, you know, like a lot of people do with, uh. With single homes or that, we have the garage is, 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 is used for tools and the other half for a car. What, what's to keep that from anybody, from, from that happening, from gasoline being stored in there, from any other? Uh, hazards that may be caused.
Well, again, that's gonna fall on.
If you don't mind, I, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I think there's a lot of questions about parking, Mr. Gaskoff and from what I've heard. Um, Brian Crowitz and, uh, and, and John Rocker are listening to all of this. I think that there might be a better time, maybe next time, to put them on and talk about the way that they operate buildings. You know, i- it, it might be helpful to you to listen to their, to them and how they would do it, and you can ask all the questions you want.
So like what you're, what you're saying, Mr. Layer, is that was, that's more of a, uh, operational procedural issue?
It is.
Well, and I agree, I agree with that to some extent, uh, Tom, you gotta remember, this is the engineering speaking.
So this, this takes me to another, this takes me to another point, Mr. Chair. Uh, if somebody's using the two spotted, the two spots, and this, this is actually marries up to what, uh, Jerry was saying before. And they, they own the two spots, the two spots are allotted to this development. They're only really using one, which means the other car is parked outside. All right, so that takes up away a free quote-unquote free spot. Now, I know I spoke earlier about the architecture, uh, and the planning. Of the building which shows on the, on PB two hundred, and if that's not for now, I'll, I'll wait. But it does show a lounge, I don't know if that's a, if that's, I don't know, for people just to lay down, or if it's a cocktail lounge. And then you do have a gym next to it, well, it could be a gym just for the building. And if that's the case, then there would be no additional, uh, vehicle traffic other than the people who already live there. So if that's the case, we can close that off, but we need to know that that's not going to be part of any commercial slash retails. Uh, space.
Public.
Public use space.
Very good question, Mr. Gaskoff, and I, and our architect will tell you that that space is going to be used just by the tenants. It's going to be a yoga, a yoga room, it'll be a billiard room, it'll be some, something else.
A party room for the tenants.
It'll be an amenity for the tenants.
Okay, then, uh, thank you, it, it just wasn't clear from the plans and I do appreciate that. Um. Let me see, okay, um. Let's see. Just a moment to, um. I would wait, I would make one thing, uh. Uh, well, you have it actually up here. You cannot change the lighting on Plainfield Road as it is a county road, so you would have to get the county to approve that.
Yeah.
That's why I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, in terms of, I know, uh, decorative lighting, I'm not so sure that that's something that we can do without getting county approval.
You could probably do it along the sides of your driveway, but not on the roadway.
I, I agree.
Okay, and, uh. A- as, as we're here and, and it was talked about, um. We talked about the wetlands in the back. Uh, and a potential walkway bike path through there. I'm, I'm asking our attorney, would that not constitute an easement? And are we allowed to ask, well, I guess we could ask for anything, right?
Well, I'm sorry, you're asking if.
I'm asking our attorney, our attorney to confirm or deny.
Steve, let me just clarify that, I think what he's talking about is if the rear of this property does not abut a public roadway. There would be some sort of, um, passage through someone else's property. Now, from what I've seen, I think this back of this property does abut some of a roadway, does not, does it not?
It does not.
It does not, so if there's no public land, uh, to the back of this. Then you really can't, oh, I see what you mean, okay, I see that now. Uh, the street is over neck, is to the next door neighbor. So you ha- you, you really wouldn't be able to get out of the back of the property then, at that point.
Wi- without trespassing on somebody else's property or then providing an easement or other.
Exactly, exactly.
License to utilize.
That might be a moot point, uh, it was, it sounded like a good idea, but the roadway is slightly shifted to the wrong way. That's not good.
If, if I can speak on that, but perhaps we can get, uh, it's maybe an easement for future use in case. You know, the way, the way I see it, this whole area now is going to fall down and be redeveloped, because that's. What we just, we kind of essentially just rezoned it, so those other homes may be sold. And, and, you know, have higher density development, so maybe in the future, we will have access to that, so perhaps we could get. At least the right to do that, um, with this.
Well, we can get them, we can, we, if the applicant so, wants to, uh, agree to it and we make it a condition. We could say that, uh, in the future, if, if the, uh, opportunity arises for them to have an access out the back of the building. To do so, because that way it would provide a, a pathway to people using a back road instead of the main road. I, I like that idea, unfortunately, the way it appears now, they'd have to go over someone else's property.
Right. But if those other properties turn over.
Yeah. Uh, sure.
Thank you. And Jerry, uh, just, uh, to my, uh, fellow board member, that was not to be argumentative, uh, so as you know. It was just a clarification of, uh, whether we can or cannot do such thing.
No, that's a good point. I'm looking at the tax map, I haven't gotten to that exact point, whether or not they do a but, I'm not sure, but. If they do, I think we should still go through it, and if they don't, we should, again, get, get future use out of it.
Yeah, I, I, I think the theory is a good idea, but the practicality of it at this point. Would mean trespassing or getting permission to go over someone else's.
Right, which we, which is obviously not feasible, but if, like I said again, you know, get permission for future use, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Fair enough, I, I, I'm good right now, thank you very much for your time.
You can share the screen. Alright, any other questions of their, of their engineer? Yes, Brian.
I have a, um, Ms. Ms. Miller, thank you for your testimony, I, I know we've, uh, been speaking about it for a while, so I'll try to be brief, just a couple of questions. Um, spoke about, uh, the critical, uh, the wetlands buffer and a DEP development permit. Um, is there any critical area setback requirement relief you need from the township?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch the end of your question.
Is there any critical area setback relief that you need from the township in addition to the DEP approvals?
Uh, no, there's a impervious coverage in non-critical area requirement. Um, those numbers are on my sheet too, uh, we're allowed. Seventy percent of coverage in non-critical areas on the property and we're at fifty-four point three.
Okay, so we don't, there, there's no setback, particularly to the wetlands, and talk about the wetlands, there's no, you don't require any relief from the township as a setback to a critical area on the wetlands.
Uh, not that we identified, no. I, I don't know of any other buffer beyond the, the DEP buffer from the wetlands. Um, we did identify the non-critical area because it's a specific coverage requirement for Long Hill.
Okay, thank you. Um, with regard to your parking count, you testified that the reduction in the commercial, uh, square footage. Correlated to the available parking spaces. Uh, previously, I believe the retail space was about twenty-four hundred square feet. At two hundred square feet per spot that related to about twelve spaces. And now it's nineteen hundreds and that, that, uh, becomes nine and a half spaces, just doing, doing the math on the back of the napkin here. Um, so that's a difference of two and a half spaces, you're saying that on your drawings right now, you required fifty, uh, you're required fifty-seven point three. You're providing sixty, you add two and a half to the fifty-seven point three, you get fifty-nine point eight, so your proposed parking could accommodate. The twenty-four hundred square foot re- uh, commercial, uh, space, correct?
When we laid out the site, we did have the, um, twenty-four hundred number for the counts. Uh, that has been, that area's been reduced, we kept the proposed parking at sixty, so we actually exceed what's required now.
Cor- correct, but when you, when you testified before, you mentioned that it's the park, the, the reduction in commercial space correlated to parking, but in, but in fact. You couldn't maintain the commercial, that was what was previously, uh, specified and still being in compliance with the order.
Now, then, would you go to twenty-four hundred square feet for residential stall, um, for, for commercials, still have enough parking, correct?
Correct, that's not the, what we're proposing here.
But the, the, the takeaway from that twenty-four hundred was the lounge and the exercise, is that what you added?
That's right, more amenity space for the.
Oh, more amenity space, okay.
Right, well, what I'm trying to draw, I guess what I'm trying to draw out of the testimony is, the testimony previously was related to parking, I, but I'm trying to figure out what the reason for the reduction in commercial space was. So I'm trying to find out what that answer is, so it seems like it's not parking, so I'm looking for what it was.
No, it was to add amenities for the, uh, for the apartments.
Mr. Chairman, that's not the testimony, so I was just.
But I thought that's what they said.
Yeah, our architect will be on, um, after, you know, for the building design, so as terms of parking. We exceed what's required by zone, we're still under all of the coverage. Required by zone and, and we kept the sixty to have an extra, uh, two spaces on site.
Good, thank you. Um, with regard to the parking, you said that you were not going to stipulate what was going to be dedicated to commercial. Uh, just the only ones that were going to be dedicated were the residential spaces inside the building. Uh, can you speak to the practicality of if the viability of, of someone going to the commercial space when? If the residential units have taken all the front spots and now someone going to the commercial space has to park in the back of the building?
I, I'd really like Mr. Um, Rocker to talk about that, because there's a number of questions that relate to that, Mr. Johnson.
Well, no, but this was, this was related to her testimony, so I would like her to answer, please.
Okay.
Well, again, it's, it's shared parking, uh, if the available spot for the retail or the commercial use. Up front, they do have parking only available in the back. It will be privately maintained if the owner or Leasee of that area sees it as an issue, if they, their customers complain. I always have to park in the back, they can address it with management. They need to have allocated spots between certain hours, again.
Right, but, so, so, so there's multiple concerns here from an engineering point of view, right? So one is that the, the most direct accessible route to the commercial property. So now, if you don't have dedicated spaces to the commercial property, and then this is all general, theoretically, your residential units could claim all the accessible spaces, correct?
They can get the ones up front, there will still be per code plenty of spaces on the property, this is not an expansive property. If it becomes a concern for the Leasee, they could address it with management, but otherwise.
My question was an engineering one regarding, regarding that, that the accessible space is required by code for the commercial property, so. The commercial, you're required to have the most direct accessible route to the commercial property on the shortest distance. So.
You are for handicap accessibility, but not for general site planning.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, your, your testimony up to this point is that none of the onsite spaces were, were, were dedicated. So I'm saying is, you could potentially have your residential, uh, occupants occupying your handicap accessible spaces. If they have the placard and everything and not have, you not have the, the, the accessible spaces closest to the, to the commercial space, correct?
So it's not a, a parking in general question, you're asking me if that there's more than four, three accessible. Handicap spaces needed on the property for.
No, I'm not, it's, it's a two-part question, one is just the practicality of not having dedicated spaces for the commercial property, close to the commercial property. And the second is the accessibility of the, of the commercial, of the accessible spaces to the commercial property.
So the accessible spaces are, are closest to the main door, which will access. Either the elevator to go upstairs for the residential or for accessibility to the commercial use in the front. So those, the handicap accessible spots are closest to the door.
I understand that, but they're not dedicated to the commercial use.
Again, it's, it's a shared parking situation, it's, it, the handicap accessibility code is not broken down by use. It's, we do a general.
I understand, but you're in front of this board right now for, for a variant, so we're trying to figure out how this lot is going to be used.
Uh, no variances, I'm sorry, there's no variances, we're not.
The use variance was the last mission, now you're on a site waivers, but we're, still, we are here for site plan approval, so it's up to the jurisdiction of the board, correct?
Right.
Okay, great, so my question is, how, how, where the commercial property is in relation to the accessible spaces?
The commercial access. The commer- the, the handicap spaces are the closest spaces to both the residential lobby and the commercial space.
And would you specify it to a certain percentage of the spaces closest to the commercial spot to being dedicated to that commercial property?
In terms of the handicap accessible or general parking?
Both.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I'm just not, I'm not following the, the question, I apologize.
Oh, I, I want, I want, what I'm, I guess, I guess this is more of a question for the, for the owner, but my question is that. Front spaces closest to the commercial property should, a certain portion should be dedicated for that use.
Could, but the offset of that, Mr. Johnson, is that you're, you may be putting handicapped spaces away from the residential. Closest to the residential door and I understand.
That, that's not true, I'm not saying dedicate every, every spot to commercial, what I'm saying is, it's not practical to, for someone visiting the commercial space to potentially have to park in the back of the.
Okay, w- w- we'll talk about that internally.
Okay, uh, I have a question, Samantha, I have a question for you. Uh, along with what, uh, Brian was talking about, is there any requirement? And I don't know if there is or isn't, is there any requirement that you, that we have a commercial use, you provide parking within a certain distance of that? That's dedicated.
Within a certain distance? No, it's the closest route and you need to provide an accessible route. Um, so that's, you know, the, the grading of the route has to be such that it's accessible. So the, the way that it is laid out currently does, does meet those, those standards.
Okay, so aside from not having a sign saying for commercial, for store, uh, visit only or for whatever. That's the only thing that would be missing that would dedicate it.
Correct, and I, and I, and I agree with, with Ms. Muller's testimony that, you know, the ADA regulation doesn't, doesn't differentiate between the uses. It's, it's based on the total number of parking spaces in the parking lot. Um, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't say you need to assign X number of ADA for. Retail, you need to assign X number for commercial, um, residential and they need to be, you know, stipulated that way. Um, that's, that's not a requirement.
I am, I am, I'm aware of that, what I'm saying, as the board, the board can specify a condition.
Absolutely.
No, I, I just wanted to know what the legal requirement was, Brian, so we're not.
Correct, yeah, in the Americans with Disabilities Act, that is not included, but that is, yes, Mr. Johnson, that is something that you can, um, stipulate. And I believe that was even a question in my, my report about potentially, you know, s- using signage to either assign. Permanently or assign between certain hours, um, you know, if, if the, if the store is open from nine to five. You know, this is ADA accessible parking only for commercial use between nine and five, something like that.
Okay.
Another question I have regarding the first space, uh, your site plan indicated that you have a, an approach and like, it's kind of like a throat to the, to the street. Um, how does a car turning into your parking lot get into that very first park? It looks like you have a double yellow line that would prevent you from crossing.
Uh, we have fifty, probably fifty feet of double yellow, uh. We could shorten it up, um, it's, it's a good comment, I can certainly, again, that's more for traffic flow. Versus a do not pass double yellow line.
You can make that a white line, you can make that.
I can make that a white line, thank you.
And, um, just my final question and perhaps this is more for our board attorney, for the work that's outside of the property line, I assume that's. Beyond the jurisdiction of this board to approve, so that would be the jurisdiction of the county?
If it's in the, uh, county right-of-way, Plainfield Road?
Yes.
Uh, the work that's being performed. Yeah, that, well. Actually, I'm not certain, I mean, i- if it's in, in the right-of-way, normally it would be the county, county's jurisdiction, but are, are you talking about construction work relative? To improvements that are on the property?
No, for instance, the sidewalk they're proposing, as, as I understand it, is off of their property line, it's not on their property.
Okay, an off-site sidewalk, then I don't believe that would, I don't believe that would be within our jurisdiction.
Okay, so then, um, I would suggest as, as a condition of approval, if the board were to act favorably, that your approvals of the county be, that is subject to the approvals of the county.
Oh, it would absolutely have to be subject.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that that goes what I've said.
Right. But I'm saying is one of the conditions, like and it was important one, when the use variances were discussed, is that we had walkability. If for some reason the county has an objection to this, it affects what our determinations have been up to this point.
We would have to come back to you.
Preliminary conversations with the county engineer and he had they they voiced no objection to the extension of the sidewalk.
Okay, but it's what you're suggesting, Vice Chairman, the as as I believe Mr. Lair was just saying, if the county rejects and and makes it impossible, not feasible for the offsite sidewalk, that they would have to come back to us?
Well, it would, in my opinion, and I'm going to tell you, Mr. Johnson, I, Vice Chairman, that would be a material deviation from our use variance. And I can put it on the record right now. It's a material deviation because we talked about walkability. And if that can't happen, you know, we have to come back to you.
Okay, then. We 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 have it by way of stipulation, Vice Chairman. Thanks.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer? Yes, Ben.
Hello. Again, I'm not I'm not positive these are all for the engineer, but these are some questions that I had in mind and a couple that might have been covered last year when you were in front of the board. So what's this? What's the status again of the crosswalk, perhaps going across Plainfield?
Within the jurisdiction of the county. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Kathy.
We do not have that is not included in the application.
No, but it's is it being proposed? So it's not being proposed then? So it hasn't? Okay. Was there, you know, I'm not sure who's who's best to answer this, but this, you know, this low intensity commercial use? Is there, you know, parameters to what, you know, when it goes from low to high? What's what are we, you know, agreeing to in that in that regard?
I think your question is, Ben, is there a definition of what use qualifies as a low intensity or high intensity?
Correct.
Is there a sun definition of that?
It it says to reasonable satisfaction of the board in in the conditions of the board's resolution. So we would have to get to that point and say, we don't want you to put a discotheque there.
Right.
We don't want you to put so.
A laundry mat or something.
Yeah, a lawn, you know, that's it's it's up to you. We we did propose some ideas. One would be like a lawyer's office or an engineer as a as a proposal. We did say maybe a small broker brokers out brokerage outfit that could go there at last time. But, you know, it's it's something that we could talk about towards at the end as a condition.
Yeah. And then, you know, lastly, I guess this the sidewalk extending north to Valley or to the bank. Is there, will there be language in the resolution about, you know, maintenance of that sidewalk throughout, you know, being done by the property owner? Or is it something that the the owners of the properties, you know, on the that are having it built on them?
So we have to post a two year maintenance bond with the town. So our obligation extends through the time of construction and then for two years hence.
Well, then the the landlord for that property would have to maintain that sidewalk for snow.
Correct.
And then if there's any, you know, any break in the sidewalk or then it has to be.
They would have to maintain it.
You'll be the property owner. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions of the engineer? Yes, Jerry.
Sorry, I'm muting. Sorry, I'm muting. So we talked about, you know, again, walkability and somehow getting through the rear of the property to Bay Street or ultimate goal to get to Poplar, whether it's to get to, you know, Shopright or the Little League Field or anything else down there. You know, if it can't be the back of the property, which does, by the way, have a twenty foot wide drainage easement, which I think is township, I'm not sure, it doesn't specify in the tax map, but I but I'm thinking that that could get you to Bay Street. Right? Can we at least look at that? That's what I want to know. Somehow in our process, can we attempt that with what we talked about with our engineer Samantha? With, you know, maybe some kind of raised cordwalk or something like that to get you back there? If that's not possible, back to the sidewalk on Plainfield going towards Metzler, because now we could get people down Metzler and using the sanitary and drainage and sorriesments, we could get to a paper street Magnola over there. So I'm just looking for ways to move people around the town.
I want. But Jerry, again, I don't think we have the jurisdiction to make them put sidewalks in front of somebody else's.
We do not. We do not. We do not, but they're going the other way with it. So they could go this way with it too.
Right. Well, the other way they're they're hooking up with a nut with an existing sidewalk. But you know, I mean, if those properties to their south ever get developed, that's something we can consider more sidewalks.
So I like your idea about using the property. Using the drainage easement, then we'd have to look at that.
I'm not I'm not going to speak on behalf of, you know, the township engineer. But generally speaking, in other municipalities, we do not allow permanent structures to be built in utility easements. Whether it's a sanitary easement or a storm easement in general, permanent structures are are prohibited.
And. A walkway would be considered a permanent structure?
If it was, especially if it was like an elevated boardwalk, yeah. If you were going to put a gravel path across it, you know, perpendicular, they might allow something like that. But generally, permanent structures are are prohibited.
I agree with you in general. However, I have seen exemptions to that. I've seen, you know, there's a resident in town who has his pool in the utility easement. Okay? He built it without permits and it was, you know, blessed by the governing body at one point. So I'm saying things can be done if we want them to be done.
That's the ultimate.
That's why I said the caveat is that, you know, I'm not speaking on behalf of the town, speaking in general terms.
All I'm asking to do is, you know, have have some type of process where we look at this. And you were open to that before. And if it's, you know, if it's not doable, hey, then we move on. But I I want that to be looked at if it's possible. I don't know how that's done. That's beyond what I know, but.
I'm shaking my head because I I don't know how to. I don't know how you do that, but but well, we're hearing you, Mr. Aronio, but we're not.
Thank you.
There's a solution.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I think it's more important that we consider things and 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 view all the options because but as Jerry said, the the main goal is to get people off of main streets with walking and bicycles. And because you're not supposed to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. So you put the kids on the side of the street. That's not safe. You know, if we can get them off the street, that would be good. Any other questions? Nope, saying none. Okay. What's your next witness?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, members of the public.
I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I'm just asking, what would be your next witness after this?
I would like to put Mr. Rocker and Mr. Crowitz on just to answer the questions about.
Okay, before you do that, just so I know where you're going, I want to open up for questions of the public. When I say questions, I mean questions. Please, no, no dialogue, no opinions. We'll get to that at some point. So please limit yourself to engineering questions, not traffic, please. We haven't got to the traffic yet. I know it's tempting, but I'm just putting a parameter here because I don't want to go off 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 the script here. Do we have any questions from the public?
We do. Actually, I believe Mr. Jordan Friedman, I believe, is the objecting attorney. So I'm gonna promote him to panelist.
Okay.
So that we can see him. And I believe, Mr. Warner, you need to swear him in.
No, no, not at all.
Oh, not.
He's asking questions.
Oh, he's just asking questions right now. Okay.
Yes, you forgot my my speech here. Go ahead. Mr. Friedman. Can you? Yes. Can you put your? There you go. All right. That light above you. Yeah, could you? Yeah, you you got a halo over your head. There you go. That's better. Yeah, you what questions do you have for their engineer?
Sure.
Let's let's start with your name, Mr. Friedman, firm, and who you're representing for the record, please.
Absolutely. Jordan Friedman, Vestal and Sullivan. And we are representing Terrence Golden, the owner of three properties, twenty four and twenty six Metzler and four Walnut Walnut Avenue. Okay. Go ahead. Okay. Ms. Muller, would it be fair to say that in preparation of of all the documents that you prepared and comprising a part of the application, you were familiar with DEP's Freshwater Wetlands Letter of Interpretation? It's one of the documents also comprising the application. And it has a stamp of January thirteenth, twenty twenty. Are you familiar with that document?
Yes.
Could you help me out? Do you? Would you happen to have a copy of it in front of you?
I don't know that I have it within the files that I have at home with me.
Ms. Kuntz, are you able to bring it up on?
What is your question, Mr. Friedman? What is what is your question?
Mr. Chairman, I really would like to avoid a repeat of last time.
Okay. Mr. Lair, let him let him get the letter up if he has a question about it. So we can all see what he's asking.
Which letter are we talking about?
This is the DEP Letter of Interpretation.
Oh, the LOI. Catherine, do you have the LOI handy or do you? I'll pull it up from the website.
I have it handy on my screen if you want me to show.
Okay, go ahead. If you want to share it and then he can ask the question.
And it's part of the record. We don't have to mark it as an exhibit. We have it properly identified.
Okay.
Can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. You need me to scroll or go to a separate sheet? Just let me know.
To page two, under general information.
Sure. Here you go. Can you see that there's a size? Okay, I can zoom in if you need.
No, I I I have a copy in front of me, so it's it's fine.
You can make it a little bigger. There you go. All right, thanks. Well, it's hard of seeing.
It looks big on my large monitor on my left hand, right hand side here.
Okay, what question do you have concerning this?
All right, Ms. Muller, were you familiar with the first paragraph under the heading General Information during the preparation of your work?
That's basically a statement that, and that's a catchall by the DEP. That's a pretty standard statement in their LOIs.
And if you if you could help me out, what exactly does it say?
You know, I I am going to object to this. This is a state letter.
All right. But hold on, hold on, timeout. Mr. Friedman, do you have a?
I doesn't want to repeat what happened last time, but he's doing.
Are you have a particular fact or question that you're questioning that paragraph concerning this property?
I just want to make sure that she's familiar with it and then I have.
Well, she said she was. She said she was, and she can see it. I don't think it's necessary for her to read it out loud. It's we all see what it says. You have a question that pertains to this property about that.
Ms. Kuntz, can you put up on the screen the documents that I submitted to you earlier today, which I'd like to have marked as objector one?
I'm going to object to the to the placement of those on record, and I'm going to tell you the reasons why. These are the exact same documents that he exactly to the word that he he presented during the use variance portion of the testimony. We have stated on the record time and time.
You don't even know what the question is, Mr. Lair.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Friedman, he's making an objection to. I'll weigh in on it after he makes the objection. You'll have an opportunity.
Let him make the objection.
Asked and answered time and time again, Mr. Crowitz said, and I know where he's going with this, is that you've that there are trees that were were knocked down. They were not knocked down by my client. My client has said it repeatedly. And yet you bring the same issue up during the site plan. What's your question?
Ms. Kuntz, would you kindly put the document up on the screen so I can ask?
I object. I object.
I don't I don't believe I'm able to.
Steve.
I'll advise the board if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I would like.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Lair, while you may be prescient based upon what happened in the prior use variance approval aspect of these proceedings, at the very least, Mr. Friedman should be allowed to put the exhibits up and reintroduce them. This is a separate application and they're even though it's site plan. It's not. It's it's site plan related and the applicant does have the burden of proof with respect to the site plan approval and indeed a heightened burden of proof with respect to having to reprove the negative criteria under the D one enhanced quality approved standards for this application. Now, if and when those.
Warner, let's read the words. The words say.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second, Mr. Lair. I have a question. My cloud is up. Does that letter or his question have an engineering aspect to it?
I I don't know. He won't. I've asked him what's his question.
Wait a minute, hold it. That letter, if it's the letter dealing with trees, that's not an engineering question as far as I'm concerned.
The document that I submitted to Ms. Kuntz earlier today is a copy of the complaint form that our client had submitted a couple of years ago. I have a very simple question about the complaint form, but Mr. Lair just.
What what's the simple question, Mr. Friedman? You can make a profit.
Please tell me your question before we see the document. What is your question?
I don't know if the question will be received as it's intended if no one has the document in front of them.
I was under the impression that we weren't able to submit exhibits at this time, that we aren't testimony. This is just questioning. Am I correct, Mr. Warner?
Let me let me let me stop this. Mr. Chairman, can I have your permission to weigh in, please legally, so that we can all do this and do this right? He can utilize exhibits to ask questions. The applicant does have a burden of proof here. And at the very least, he should be able to put the exhibits up for the purposes of asking a question or two and begin the process so that we don't all speculate and make this board and its decision making and any denial or grant vulnerable to reversal by a court on an appeal. Okay? Once he starts asking the questions, if he's proceeding down a path that is not appropriate or is repetitive or what have you, then question, you know, when those questions come, we can address a valid objection at that point. But my strong advice to the board is let him put the exhibits up to ask his question.
Right, but I I have a caution. If this is not engineering related, I'm gonna stop it. It's gotta be engineering related.
Understood. I appreciate the board advise abiding by its attorney's advice. I think that's prudent. The the so if we have the exhibits, he can utilize them for questioning purposes. What exhibit do you want, Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Friedman, you actually have the ability to share screen.
Yeah, you can share your screen.
You can share your screen.
I do not have the document available on my screen.
Which exhibit do you want her to put up, Mr. Friedman?
Just the complaint response form.
Okay, can someone email those to us right now, too? Can that happen?
Yes, I can email them to everybody. I sent them. That's not going to be a quick thing.
Mr. Friedman, I would have appreciated that if this was your intent, you should have made sure that we either had it or it was available to be put up because.
You know when we found out about this, Mr. Chairman, at five o'clock tonight?
I understand that. I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying. I I I respect your right to ask questions and use your 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 exhibits. But these exhibits, one, should have been readily available to our board secretary and two, disseminated among the board prior to this night. I don't appreciate you coming up with a a prior used exhibit that isn't currently within the package of this application. It was looked at by the board. A lot of the members haven't seen it because they're new members or they just didn't get a chance. And I appreciate your your efforts here. It's just you have to understand if we can't pull it up on our screen and you can't pull it up on our screen, then how are we going to see it? You know, you you have the burden here of asking the question and showing us the exhibit.
Mr. Chairman, I accept responsibility for the lateness of reaching out to Ms. Kuntz today. There are extenuating circumstances that are not important to be disclosed on the record. I wish I could correct this easily for everyone's use. I do believe I will get another opportunity later on in the hearing to ask my question. And if if I have to pass on asking the engineer about it right now, I I knowingly do so. I do not want to hold up the.
Mr. Friedman, I will give you every opportunity to use that to use that exhibit when it is available for everyone to look at. Right now, if you have an actual engineering question as to trees, parking, the building, whatever that we heard our testimony on, please ask it. If you need to use an exhibit that we've seen, please ask to have it put up. But anything else, if you haven't produced it and you can't pull it up, I I can't. I I'm not going to let you ask a question about it at this time. But anything else, if you haven't produced it and you can't pull it up, I I can't. I I'm not gonna let you ask a question about it at this time.
Well, the question is simply this, is whether Ms. Muller is aware if any of the information in that complaint form. Was subsequently shared with DEP following its its issuance of the letter of intent. That is my sole question to her.
Okay, do you have any knowledge of that? Can you answer that?
I cannot answer that.
Okay. Is there another witness that may be able to answer that, Mr. Lehr?
The only person who might be answered able to answer that is is uh Mr. Crowitz or Mr. Rocker.
Okay, fair enough. If they can answer it, that's fine. But right now, you you're the engineer said she can't answer that. She doesn't know.
Correct.
And I figured that uh the engineer would not be coming back on another evening, so I wanted to use.
Oh, yes, she is. Oh, yes.
Yes, yes. In fact, I was just going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, it's twenty after ten, so I would suggest that after. Mr. Friedman is done with his questions for the evening, uh we let the public know the next date.
I am done. I am done with my questions.
All right, Mr. Friedman, I hope you understand. No one's trying to stop you from asking questions. We just want to make sure that whatever you ask. The rest of us can see what you're talking about, and I'm sorry that that couldn't be done. Is there another question? We have we have a a little bit of time here. Is there another question from a member of the public about engineering?
Uh yes, we have another hand up. Linda, Mrs. Parisi, Linda Parisi?
Yes, Mr. Miss Parisi.
Hi.
Hi.
And please give us your address, please, Miss Parisi.
Name it.
I am immediately next door at fifty-four Plainfield Road.
To the south of this property?
Correct.
Okay, so what is your question for Ms. Muller?
So my question is, when you were talking about the driveway, when it comes in, it's twenty-four feet. And it goes to twenty-nine feet wide. Is there a reason why you would go to twenty-nine feet if only twenty-four? Is needed. This way, it would be less impervious coverage and more of a distance between my home. And the parking lot.
So due to the the nature of the underbuilding parking, uh we do try and maximize the distance. Coming out of a garage door. Um so for a typical ninety-degree parking, we would have a twenty-four-foot aisle. Uh ninety-degree parking is a nine-foot wide space, so you would actually start turning your car. To leave the space before your car's fully out of the space. In a garage situation such as this, your garage door is narrower, so you're gonna pull out of the. The garage further before you start turning your wheels. So that's why we're able to maintain the ten. We actually exceed the ten-foot buffer. Uh from parking to the property line. Um and and we took that to give a little bit more ease coming out of those. Uh garage spaces, especially closer to the entrance.
Is that a safety issue when it comes to backing up?
It's a functionality and safety.
Um I, Ms. Parisi obviously is concerned about buffering. Uh I I'm sure that. The applicant would be more than willing to uh look at that and make sure there's a there's adequate buffering and trees and. Adequate uh noise and and view. Buffering, correct?
That's correct. We proposed the fence and also landscaping along the whole property line.
Any other question, Ms. Parisi?
I do. I do. Um just because some of the trees that are there, to be quite honest, I'm not sure what trees are on my property. And what trees are on forty-four Plainfield prop property, so I don't know if. The existing is coming down, if they're being replaced, or what? The plan is for that.
Well, we do have the 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 applicant does have a planner and uh. This lit, Mr. Lehr, their planner would uh be discussing more about that.
Yes.
Yeah, so I I I would think your question uh is valid. It's a good question, except it's for the engineer. That's not something that she uh. You know, she's just talking about the distance of the buffering.
Okay, all right, I have just a couple of more. So in the calculations, your impervious coverage, your setbacks and all of that. Is that in the zone that this was zoned for, the BD zone? Or is that the new multi-use zone are you going off of to come up with your impervious coverages? Because. It's seems like in the wetlands, there's nothing but all the impervious coverage. Is in the area of the non-wetlands.
The zoning that we did comparative that I testified for is the zoning for the BD commercial zone.
So not like a multi-use zone, which would have different. Setbacks and impervious and all of that. Okay. And then last question, do you know, can you tell me how much open space there is?
Um I could tell you that our impervious lot coverage for the total project is thirty-eight point one percent of the site.
And the rest of it is uh.
Is green.
Is green.
Right, but a lot of that is the wetlands. I mean, like, as the open space where it comes to like activity for whoever's living there.
The passive recreation area on the top, um you know, we're our building's thirty-six feet from the property line. So we have that area less what we're gonna be landscaping.
And does it run the whole length down?
No, it'll it'll run down to what's maintained now, um and then within the wetland buffer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Parisi, and you have ample opportunity to answer, ask more questions of their other witnesses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um I think now we should probably uh end and discuss the next date.
I just want to know, are you are you closing the public portion to Ms. Muller?
At this point, yes, uh only because I we can't extend another question and stay within our ten-thirty boundaries.
I don't believe there was anyone else who wanted to ask a question this evening anyway. No further hands were raised, so I think we're com- we're covered there.
Well, I, yeah.
Don't be coming back, though.
Yes, he has to come back because we have other uh we have the question. We'll have other questions from people.
I want to proceed with my next one. So are you closing the public portion to this witness?
To this witness, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh what's the next date that we have?
February fifteenth, two weeks.
Is that uh good for your people, Mr. Lehr?
Um I'm I'm they're hearing, so I'm gonna just text and say anybody that can't, let me know right away.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Deb if uh uh there's anything else scheduled for any portion of that evening yet?
No.
So it it would be the entire night potentially.
Correct, entire night.
I'm not seeing any objection. Uh I'm. I don't see any objection that from any of my witnesses that. So I am and I'm good myself, so.
Good, good, okay, good. Uh I'm hope I'm hoping we can make some more progress. Uh. And uh you know, I mean, this this obviously, we all knew this wasn't gonna end tonight, because. These type of things, you know, there was a lot of testimony, a lot of a lot of good questions and, you know, this.
I just want to say, Mr. Aronio, I hope that we were able to satisfy a lot of your concerns because you asked a lot of good questions.
Well, thanks for that, but I think some of it's still open, right?
Uh the idea.
Accommodation. Yeah, but thank you for for listening. I know it might be frustrating from the applicant standpoint, but. You know, we like to, we like to get things done, too, so.
Understood, understood.
But never ask Jerry a loaded question that if he's satisfied.
Thank you.
So. All your time and and and.
We know the answer.
And help. I appreciate it and.
I'm only teasing, Jerry.
All right, so from the board, we need a motion in a second and it's all in favor of vote to um carry this application to. February fifteenth with no further notice required by the applicant.
Right, seven thirty PM virtual with an extension of time to act if we need it, although we probably don't. It's only two weeks.
That's fine.
Do I have a motion?
Motion moved.
All right, uh moved by Brian, seconded by Tom.
Whatever.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor. All right. All right, guys. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, seconded. All right. Hey, everybody. We don't have.
Night, everybody.
All right, bye-bye, guys. Thank you.